Great, so we have some questions that I'm sure you would like to start out and talk a little bit about your.
What's going on?
What's going on? Yeah, just a couple of little things.
Little things. So today Governor Moore came here and they did a tour of Marriott. So he looked at a couple of programs that Marriott was doing with their staff. Yeah, I have notoriously bad relationships with microphones. So he spoke to a group of youth. These happened to be kids from DC public schools that Marriott was doing a program with. Then he, we just kind of looked around the building. We talked to the folks there. That was his visit. And other than that, we've been really busy on a lot of fronts. We've been trying to push the county's economic development forward in ways we've not done this before. So we have a very aggressive agenda. We restored people on our staff who actually worked with small businesses which had really declined when they created the Economic Development Corporation. All of the stuff we had in-house was really gutted. And we realized that, you know, it's kind of like the lifeblood of the county are the small businesses. They occupy more space, they hire more people. And so we've now kind of restored teams that are out there working with people who are in businesses, helping people who want to get into businesses, connecting people with the SBA. So doing a lot of constructive stuff at that end. On the life sciences end, it's really been exciting. I feel like, you know, my reputation had it that I was going to destroy the economy, which is not exactly what my plan was. So where we've gotten a number of really good things. We just got to permanently close out on our budget. You know, when I came into office, the county had never achieved 10% reserves. So we're now up to 16% reserves. We are over what we need to reserve. I'll say the council's been too conservative about willing to spend money because, you know, if your target's 10 and you're getting over 10, you ought to be able to use some of that money to meet needs. And they've been a little bit stingier on that than I would like to see them. And we reserved for an employee retirement fund. And we proposed, because our actuary said we're over-reserved, that we reduced some of that and used that to balance the budget last year. And there was no willingness to use the funds to balance the budget. So taxes, the tax increase is a little bit higher than I would have had to do otherwise. We were, you know, confronted with the school system which asked for $300 million, which is unprecedented. That's literally 10% of their budget. And nobody's ever asked for increases like that before. So we weren't planning a tax increase when that came in. But the schools are in a mess and it's not a mess of their own making. The salaries in the schools, starting salaries dropped to about 53,000. Not competitive, not even the highest in the state anymore. Our per pupil spending, which used to be the highest in the state, is no longer the highest in the state. So we've kind of allowed the schools to erode. So when somebody says, "Our schools aren't like they used to be", well, we're not funding them like we used to fund them. And I think it has real impacts on the schools. There is this thing called the blueprint, which everybody has to live with. And the blueprint says by 2026, all teachers in the state have to make a starting salary of $60,000. So the school system not only needs to make it, but they have to be ahead of everybody else. Because if everybody's at 60, including us, and you can live here, you can live on the beach, or you can live in, you know, a bunch of other counties where the cost of living is half of what our cost of living is, we're not going to be competitive. And then DC kind of threw in a kicker. They raised starting teacher pay to 75,000. So because of all that, I decided I would support the budget because it was largely for pay raises. I don't have the same view as giving the schools money in general because they really are kind of unaccountable. We have felt a lot of frustration about year after year, we give them, we always made maintenance of effort. We usually spent above maintenance of effort for, they would say, programs to help close the achievement gap. A, they haven't done anything close to closing the achievement gap. And when the program ceased to exist, the money never reappears. And so we'd never see any savings from them when they change programs. It's not used to do some of the new programs. Everything new is additive to what you did before. So we're trying to reshape the relationship. One of the things we're going to ask the state legislature to do is to require the school system to do their budget at the same time that the county does its budget. Because they go ahead of us, they have no idea what the revenues are going to be. They tell the public, "This is what the budget's going to be, and we're going to build all these schools." And the county has to fund it without even knowing if we have the resources. So it puts us in a really difficult position in terms of, you know, now we're cutting the school budget. So we would like to work with them in developing the school budget. And this year, we're probably going to be very pointed about giving them what we think our revenues are going to be. We don't know for sure. Historically, the biggest distribution for us was the November distribution. That's the one where we had a really good picture of what our tax revenues were going to be. Because the state's computing system is horrible and failing. The distribution for the last couple of years has been in January, which is pretty late in the budget process because that's the point you know whether or not, how much you can fund your own budget at. And the schools are sending over a budget in December and then sending over further stuff early on. And it's just, it's out of whack with what we're doing. So state thinks they might be back in line. But the good news is that after never getting to 10%, this year it's 16. And that's pretty significant. And we're really happy with that. We'll be looking for some one-time projects we can do. I don't want to build an operating budget on what could be one-time revenues. So until we see what our true income is going to be over a couple of years, there are some key projects we'd like to do, which goes back to the happy place of the economic development in the county. We've done, we're doing a lot of work in life sciences. We've got an agreement with the University of Maryland to build an institute for health computing on the North Bethesda metro. That word's hard to come out of my mouth. I still want to say White Flint. And the university has taken temporary space, 30,000 square feet, something like that, on Executive Boulevard. They'll be in there in October. And the function of the school basically is to bring artificial intelligence, big data, and machine learning to applications in the life sciences field. It's why they could deal with COVID so quickly is the ability, which has pretty rapidly emerged, to look at viruses and understand the structure of viruses and look at molecules and see the structure of molecules and match things together. And just, I don't want to do too much science, but like in the old days, I had a friend who manufactured these plates. They had 96 wells in it. You could put 96 different potential drugs in the wells. You put cancer cells on top of them and you see what killed the cancer cell. You didn't know how it worked, but you knew it killed the cell. Then you would test it on mammals to see if it didn't kill the mammal. Because you could kill cancer and kill the patient too. So that's been the process. And what they're able to do now is actually look at whether it's cellular structures or virus structures and identify vulnerabilities. And I've seen this stuff, which is why I get really excited about it. Because medicine is going to really rapidly evolve. And this institute's going to help in the discovery of drugs. Dr. Mohan, who's the head of the University of Maryland Medical System, says this should make us the silicone valley of health computing. We really do think it's going to be large. University of Maryland actually brought on an economic development person as part of their team because they believe they're going to be able to attract companies to the site. And so we're seeing a lot of activity. When I came into office, there was no lab space being built in the county. I mean, no, like is in zero. And since then, we have built around the road to 4 million square feet of new lab space. So we're providing lab space. Lab states attracts companies. So there's a really good circle of things here. So we've been successful. And we continue to grow in that space. And we're also beginning to get interest from non-life sciences companies because there's something about it. If you have a certain, if people think you're a cool place to be, you're on the cutting edge of some science, it's attractive to other people that want to be there. So we've been approached by a company that does chips. You know, somebody who does batteries is talking to us. So we're interested to see what else we can do and be out there. I feel really positive about this. The county hit unemployment at 1.5%. We did it two months in a row. We haven't had a month of 1.5% since 1990. So we know whether, yes, I don't ever expect it to say 1.5. It fluctuates a little bit around there, but full employment is 4%. So we're effectively below full employment, which is good or bad, depending what side of the labor force you're on. But that's a good place to be. So we feel pretty strong about where we're going. The weak spot is a problem caused by Mr. Powell and the interest rates, which have basically wrecked the housing market. So in our case, we were fortunate that income taxes and property taxes last year exceeded the big drop we had in recollection taxes and transfer taxes. So we were able to weather the drop. But we would have been really flush with money if we hadn't had the drop in those two other taxes. So hopefully this ends at some point and interest rates come back down to earth. Everybody says there's a lot of pent-up demand. So we expect to see pent-up demand at some point at a more normal housing market. That would make a big difference. It's probably just, not just for us, but for the state. The state thought they had a lot of money. You know, Moore was going to do the care and support. He was going to do early childhood. He figures out how he's going to give away a billion dollars. That's what he plans to do. And then he comes in and within like a week, the state discovered they miscalculated the formulas for school funding. And $1 billion disappeared out of a surplus, just like that. And that's a lot of money that disappeared out of the surplus. So he had to recalibrate his budget. The state's also dealing with recollection and transfer taxes. So they weren't able to do the things that a lot of us thought they were going to be able to do. So we didn't get the support we wanted for education. We did not get the childcare money. My personal work I'm doing with the governor's group is to try to convince them that sometimes money you spend, which you like to say is an expense, is actually an investment. That, you know, if you look at Virginia, and I'll talk about Virginia in a minute, but in Virginia invested heavily in infrastructure. And the state of Maryland invested nothing in infrastructure, other than the purple line such as it is. And they don't use the universities the way Virginia, Virginia, what's the word for it, weaponizes its university system. If a company wants to go there, they will tell you what the university will do for them. In the case of Amazon, where we outbid Virginia for Amazon in terms of money, they offered University of Virginia and George Mason. And they basically said, "We'll provide you the talent that you want to grow your business." They guessed right in terms of what Amazon wanted. The governor here guessed wrong. But Virginia does that over and over again. And so I have my staff going back and compiling a few years of stories about the state of Virginia making investments in industries. So we can show the governor that if you, because he points to Virginia like everybody else does. If you're pointing over there, you need to understand how they get where they get. And it's not because they're the same as us, but they just have different internal policies. They have very different tax policies and very different views on investment in infrastructure than the state of Maryland does. So we're hoping that we can educate and change them on that. Locally, we're really stuck. The odds of us being able to build a major transportation project are very slim if the county has to rely on its own resources. And the reason is bonding is the normal way you pay for things over a long period of time. The council set bond limits of 280 million a year, which is down 60 million from what it was when I was on the council. Over six years, $360 million. We're barely able to fund the schools. And then we struggle to fund libraries and police stations and all the other things that are capital projects. So if you know our tax rate, we were 99 cents. I think we're a buck four now. And we have impact taxes, but it's only when a developer builds a project. It's a very bad tax because it's immediate and it's not enough to build a transportation project. It's money from a building to build something, but it's not enough to build the whole thing. And you're not going to build a block of BRT at a time. You need a pile of money or a stream of money that you can bond. So we're a buck four. This is what Virginia's doing. Their base tax on residents is a buck nine. That's where they start. All commercial property pays a buck nine, for starters. Then there's 12 and a half cents tax on all commercial property for transit projects. They added a penny to the sales tax. They get 2/3 of a cent of the sales tax goes to transportation projects. They have special taxing districts, not like the stupid one we did in White Flint, which doesn't function, but real special taxing districts that raise millions of dollars. If you saw Arlington opened up, what is that station? The new metro station over there, Potomac Yards? They had developer bonds in there based on developer, developer, development district taxes. We have nothing like that. I couldn't imagine floating a $275 million bond for a transportation project. And Arlington does it on an $800 million budget. They floated a $275 million bond.
So you're bringing up a lot of really great topics. If you wouldn't mind, I want to see if we can make it a little bit more specific to our area.
I think in the end of the day, it is specific to your area. Because economic development is going to affect your area. It's going to determine what happens on Rockville Pike and what gets built. So you need, I want you to have a context of what we're trying to deal with because ultimately we are all in this together. And if we don't build infrastructure, your budget for everything we do is going to suffer and I'm going to have more limited choices. So getting the county to a place where we can, where we're more agile in raising money has a lot, will do a lot for this town as well as every town along this corridor. But I can, you know, I'll leave it there and you can, you know, go to some of the questions.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. So obviously, the health computing initiative is extremely exciting. And you mentioned Purple Line as well. I'm wondering with respect to Bethesda area itself, what your priorities are for this term, for your second term.
Well, you're coming up against the building cap.
Yes.
Which is fine. I'm a little, you know, I didn't support the Bethesda plan. And, you know, my concern was it would lead to a bunch of one and two-bedroom apartments at best. Nothing would integrate. It would all be stunningly expensive. And everything is stunningly expensive. It is not going to lead to an integrated downtown. And it's basically everything bad that I thought it was going to be. But it's made some interesting-looking buildings. So, you know, there's the upside of the buildings, but it's certainly not an equitable process. We don't have much to play with here in that sense because until we get to BRT, which is the major project that's supposed to come down here, until we can get that funded, refunded, the middle segment from like Montrose Road up to near Germantown. But we are not, we're not doing the southern part and we're not doing the northern part because it costs too much. We need to get the developers in White Flint, who in the master plan said they would give us the right of way so we could build it the way it's supposed to be with the Boulevard down the middle. And they're holding off on giving us the right of way and suggesting we should buy it from them, which has blown the cost of the project out of the water. And that's not what the master plan said. So we're dealing with that. We're still dealing with the developer on the lot over here.
Could we talk about that for a second?
Yeah.
So that is another, the Bethesda Market Park project is, I think, what you were referring to there. So that project is very exciting for the town. We have committed to millions of dollars towards that project and through the state as well. So this could be very exciting in conjunction with the Purple Line access as well. There's frustration now. And that frustration is coming down to the the lack of funding agreements being signed at this point. So there's four parties involved with the county, the parks, the town, and the developer. So I'm wondering if you might be able to comment a little bit. It's tough for us. I mean, we ask the questions, but it's tough to understand from what the particular issues might be, what particular agreements might come to pass. So could you give us some context as to, you know, with each passing day, where the site plan originally was going to be submitted this month?
Yeah.
And I have no, maybe someone else does, but I have no idea as to when that will be done. And with each passing day, it's just more costly as a project. So.
Look, we had a funding agreement with the developer. The developer came in and said they want to change it to an interim funding agreement. And it doesn't meet the legal requirements of what our people have to deal with.
Well, that was because in good faith, there was some design work being done and, you know.
It doesn't, but you can't make us do an agreement which jeopardizes the bonds, jeopardizes the county. So there are lots of reasons why it's delayed, but they didn't want to go forward the way it was planned. And they want a different structure. So we're trying to figure out what we do with a different structure. We've got these bond covenants that sit there. And so we've got to satisfy bond council. And if this agreement doesn't satisfy bond council, it causes a headache for us. So we're trying to deal with that. And they eventually, I'm sure, will deal with that. I haven't been part of these discussions. Nobody's called me and said, "Hey, what's going on?" But I did get a briefing on what was going on today. And there was supposed to be an interim arrangement on the garage. And then the developer decided to change course and proposed an interim funding agreement that would fund their activities until the GDA's were signed. And that caused a legal problem for us also. I mean, we're not free to make gentleman's agreements and just deal with things like that. So.
That was, yeah. And certainly that was due to the fact that the funding agreements were not being signed in a timely manner. So this is the kind of a stopgap, if you will, to keep things moving along so that the site plan could be submitted in a timely manner.
Our lawyers feel that this is a mutual problem.
Okay.
And that them wanting to change terms of things is not part of what we should be dealing with. I would, I would go farther. I mean, we could probably, I could probably get somebody from staff to come down and talk to you about where they are and what they're trying to untangle. Because I can't tell you what they're trying to untangle.
Fair enough. We do have meetings every other week with the developers, the DOT, and with the Parks Department. I think the frustration that Irene referred to came from the fact that, to give one example, the first draft from the developers of the GDA agreement went to the county in March. It has not yet been marked up and sent back to the developers. So the frustration is that, and this is what led to the proposal of an interim agreement, which is, hey, it's taking so much longer than we thought to be able to get permanent agreements. The developers sort of sat back and said, "Okay, but maybe we can at least get an interim agreement." And the importance of the interim agreement was to permit some pro-rata funding of all the parties to pay for the development costs. And what has slowed up the development of the site plan is the third-party work that has to be done for it. Developers not sure who's going to be paying for it. So there is an interconnectedness here between the progress of the legal agreements and the development of the physical work or the design work that's needed. And I think what, if we knew as of now that, okay, the agreements are already done, that'd be great. But what we did just here, very recently, was there were some major structural problems. So we're sort of asking ourselves, "Wait a minute, why didn't we hear about that in April? Why are we hearing about that at the end of September?"
The structural problems with the agreements, with the temporary agreements or the permanent agreement?
In the permanent agreement. So leave the interim agreement aside. But the issue is, as we understand it, that, and this is secondhand to some degree, though we've had some conversations, that the county, and understandably, is looking for a fixed-price agreement. That in itself is fine, understandable. We would welcome that as well. But the developer's observation is that a fixed-price agreement requires having, going through the entire development process, the final biz, the design work, getting a fixed price and putting that on the table. If the county's view is that they won't have anything set or be able to reimburse until there's a fixed-price agreement, then the entire development process has to proceed without any reimbursement. So the issue, at least as the developers have explained it is, is there a way through this morass so that pro-rata requirements for funding during development can be made, even if we all agree that we're going to end up with a fixed-price agreement at the end? And you're quite right. We're not looking to press for a solution tonight, Mark. Please understand that. But two points, okay, if we may. One is, we really care about timeliness because we're all very concerned, as Irene properly pointed out, additional inflation, additional cost. So timeliness really matters. And the second is that we're really believers in a partnership. Partners talk to each other. Partners sit down and discuss things together. And to have that interconnection is really important. And we're not feeling that that's occurring in a way that's.
Who normally sits at the table with you when you meet, from the county side?
From the county side, it's occasionally Chris, but usually Joe's domina.
And anybody from legal?
No. And the developers have asked for a meeting with legal. And we heard today in our call that they said legal doesn't think it's appropriate yet to meet with the developers. That's a direct quote.
So I will ask all these questions tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we know how much you've done for this project in the past. You know, thanks to you, the parks are the size that they are expected to be. So we're very grateful for that. But now our fundamental request is for your oomph. You know, help us generate that sense of excitement and pressure. A number of us had the opportunity just two days ago to go over and see the Metropolitan Park in Arlington. Amazon is developed. And it's almost exactly the same size and the same budget as what's planned here. And one of the key points that the developers made was how vital that park is to the amenities and attractiveness of the area. And you talked, you know, very importantly, about economic development. We actually see these parks as part of that. You know, revitalized farm women's market expansion flowing into the park is a big deal for Bethesda.
This is why I stuck it out to try to get this agreement and make this project happen. I mean, I will ask the legal questions. I mean, I will say it's not the first time that I'm dealing with this, with legal. Their view of the world is different than my view of the world. And but I don't have to deal with bond council and all these other people who have their own opinions about things. But let me, if this sounds definable, you said the GDA was set in March. They haven't gotten any response. And that there are structural problems in the permanent agreement. And there's nothing to reimburse absent the fixed-price agreement. And so how do we go forward?
That's the structural problem. How is payment made during the development period is really the question.
The design period.
During the design and development period, right.
How is payment made during design? And the last one I had was, legal says it's not yet appropriate to talk. That one I don't even understand at all. Because you can always talk and say, "No, that's the easiest thing to do."
That was our view.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I will write this up and tell them I need an answer.
We all care about it. We know we're all partners.
Okay.
With respect to the Purple Line, it's another project that's going to be, you know, over budget and beyond schedule. But as we look forward to that, can you commit or commit resources to, when the construction is complete and the trains are being tested, that the trail is open for use?
I think it's going to depend on the Purple Line partners when they decide the trail's open for use.
But would you be able to support the opening of that trail for use as the trains are being tested?
It's fine with me. I don't see what difference it makes. I mean, as long as they run the train and make sure it doesn't derail, which ought to be pretty basic.
Yes.
If they don't fall off the tracks the first couple of times.
Of course.
And the rails don't move, yeah. I mean, I don't see why this needs to be a prolonged process. It's taking far longer than, it's going to be in 2027.
It may be, maybe 2028, who knows?
It's, this is possibly the most expensive light-well project in the world per mile. I have never, at, what is it, $9.4 billion and 17 lousy miles? Nothing. And there is nothing here that's special. You got one tunnel. And, you know, if it was up to me, I would have turned it into a bus rapid transit. I would have just said before I go spend $9.4 billion, I'll smooth out the roadways. I'll put buses on them, you know, as a, in my nerdy world, they can now run three buses on the platoon with one driver. And so you can have your capacity issue addressed by having three buses running there. You'd have quiet rubber tires. And this would all be over with. And no electric stations, no overhead riders, none of the rest of the crap they're doing. And I don't know, at some point, if project gets this expensive, you'd be better off losing what you spent than spending three times more. It's. But I don't control that. If it was me, this thing would have been dead by now. And then, but I would have done those BRT over there. It is the right line for it. It just could have been done in a sensible way.
You mentioned the Bethesda overlay zone. We're at the soft cap.
Yeah.
And I think that anyone who's lived here more than 10 years is probably experiencing some whiplash as to, I don't think anyone expected the soft cap to reach so quickly. But it has. But it has. And while no one's necessarily talking about, you know, stopping economic development in any sense, there were some promises made in the Bethesda master plan. there were some, some promises made in the Bethesda master plan, having to do with traffic analysis. Having to do with park development, what we brought up earlier. Thirteen parks were to be developed in conjunction with this.
Did you believe that?
Excuse me?
Did you believe that? Because the previous master plan had parks and they didn't do any of them either.
So, well, now we're wondering with respect to the payments, with respect to, you mentioned county budgets earlier under different types of constraints. You know, what, as the hard soft cap and then eventually hard cap gets reached, this is a really good testing bed. This is a really good pilot test with respect not only to Thrive Montgomery, but also in general, just, just urbanization of an area. So what, what adjustments do you think that your office might ask for as this hard cap gets reached?
I mean, the adjustments I would ask for, you know, are, this, this thing has already left the barn. I mean, I'll tell you what disturbs me. They never did a racial equity analysis on this. So they never did a racial equity analysis. They excuse them from doing that. So you're basically building one bedroom and two bedroom apartments of extraordinary expense, guaranteeing that this will not become integrated. And then you're tearing down three story buildings that are today affordable and you're replacing with buildings that won't be affordable. And I've documented this and I've posted it online. There are two projects that I know for sure where they're going to have fewer affordable units after they build two or three times the number of units that exist there today. And this is their idea and it makes thrive an insult. You listen to the rhetoric about affordability and community and then they figure out, how can I have fewer affordable units? I start with, and I'm seeing this in Tacoma Park where there's, there is a several block area of high rise apartment buildings. It's a mid-rise. And you'd think in Thrive, this would be a perfect combination, right? Nope, they rezone the whole block for greater density and this is all occupied by minority people. And the city has rent control, new buildings, no rent control for five years and no more than 12 and a half percent affordable. And on the hospital site, which is nowhere close to the metro, the Purple Line station is out of the watershed, not even close to recommend the 120 foot heights that they have only proposed in other parts of the county on top of metros or on top of Purple Line stations. And as soon as you tend down from a metro for Purple Line stations, those heights go away. But in Tacoma Park, for the benefit of the college, which is going to buy the hospital, they're offering all 120 foot buildings. And they call it a minor master plan. The city has what, 17,000 people? This would add 3,500 people. It doesn't sound like a master, that's not, it had 5,000 people, I'm sorry. And it would add about 3100, 3200 dwelling units, almost double the number of apartments in the city. And like, probably like a third increase in the number of housing. That's not minor. So this is their idea of Thrive and on a residential block where there are existing three unit apartment buildings. And on the block that backs up to it, there are eight unit apartment buildings. They're proposing a knocking those down. So here you are in a residential neighborhood with a mix of affordable housing. It's like what they say in the pictures you want and they're proposing to knock that down. So, so my warning to everybody else in the community is if this is the planning board that does thrive, you're all in trouble because they have no respect for the communities. I don't see it and they hate it when I say it. But I get to look at it and I get to listen to people who are angry about it. So I can't do much about, you know, what they're, what they're going to do up here. I think, you know, the community's got to be as outspoken as possible about your expectations. The council voted for it. They should be held to where are amenities? I didn't understand the deal where there was supposed to be a park. They tell a property owner, I'm not going to let you develop your property. We're going to buy it from you. And then after they buy it from them, they sell it to another developer and say, we're not going to build a park here. And nobody thinks there's an ethics problem there. It's just, this, you live in an interesting world up here, but it's a problem. But you know, people are really quiet about these things.
I think it can be assumed that when we have the serious discussions about this, we won't be so shy. So.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, it's important because, you know, silence lets people do things. And if nobody's ever outraged, then nobody ever has to worry about you. And, you know, you got council members who represent this place who ought to be accountable for it. And not just say, that's just the way it goes. So anything I can do to help, I'll help. You all know, every time I've never had any problems about working with the community and talking about organizing, I still don't have any problems about doing that. So I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Well, let me put it out to my colleagues first. Are there any additional questions before? I'm sure the audience has. No? Okay. I'm going to put it out here. Anyone has any questions?
Judy, if you focus on Mike, you're almost going to leave the questions. How are you going to just say, no, whatever? It's a pretty strong person.
I'm pretty loud.
Okay.
I'm Judy McQuire and I want to give you a compliment and a challenge. You may not have attended, you probably didn't. On May 1st, Rich Madaleno gave a great presentation at the Capitol Budget Community Conversation. Any coverage of, and it should be widely distributed about how our tax rates are lower than local jurisdictions. And we need to hear that. And I don't object to paying taxes because we get great benefits in this, in this county. But there's a lot of people that just like to rag on Montgomery County for high taxes. And it's not true according to these data, which aren't our data, it's the DC state.
Right.
You need to publicize that. It's a great piece of analysis and I hope it gets out. But at the same meeting, and I'm president of the Friends of the Chevy Chase Library, only independent Friends Group rep, at the same meeting, David Dees or Dyce, the head of D G S, talked about our library, Chevy Chase Library. And here's a sort of paraphrase of what he said. There's no way he'll support a limited refresh, which is to say renovation. There's no way he would recommend building a new library. And he says he wouldn't support an eight story building, which is-
No, I would not support an eight story-
Even with tens of millions of bucks, you're not going to get enough affordable housing to make it worthwhile. With a library. And so, and so we're left with no renovation, no new library, no housing. And we need a statement from-
You're not left, well, don't worry about D G S. I mean, I got to put it in the budget. Statements don't, statements don't matter.
Okay. May I just offer a challenge, which we need to be more creative in thinking about the future of our library. We need to talk about different kinds of public-private partnerships. We need to talk about renovation, which the community by a vast majority supports. And we need to think creatively about how to do this. D G S and M C P L aren't the most imaginative organizations. We can, I think we can think about outside the box about how to get ourselves a better library without building a new one. And by far, that's the cheapest option. And I know the county's low on money, so I just-
Okay, so let me say, okay, so there is, I don't feel like I'm in a bind. There's a place between a refresh and tearing the thing down. They were called renovations. Right. So David thinks the thing needs more than a renovation, a refresh. This is not like some of the other libraries. We went in and put in new tile and did some, you know, nice work to make them. Then they look really good, but you can't do that with structural defects. And so it's going to require more work than that. I never said I'd support an eight story building. I've talked with a number of developers over there about what I would accept. An eight story on top of that is not because it'd be a traffic nightmare. You know, there's no way, in the morning, you're getting out and making a left turn. Or in the evening, somebody's going southbound on Connecticut is going to make a left turn. It's, it's going to be a mess. And so we've talked about something more modest. We're working with one affordable housing developer. We've looked at townhouses, two over two townhouses that can be done around the parking and then figuring out what we do with the parking, either under the townhouses and put the townhouses on a podium. There are a number of different things we're looking at that could do that. If developer came in and said, I would redo the ground floor of the library and I'll put two stories of housing on top of that, I could deal with that. But I think it's got to be sensitive to the fact that it's really difficult to move around over there. It's not, it's not an intersection, that little street that serves, I don't know its name, but it's little. And then, you know, if you can't get out there, you're going to try to get out on East West Highway. At Rush Hour, that's going to be a challenge. So I don't, you know, any of the proposals where they wanted to put 200 units on top of the library, I was like, nope. Not interested in that. This is not going to work. But we, you know, we've tried to do housing on libraries and there's a way to do housing around there. And we'll figure out how to do housing around there. But it's going to be at a scale that's not intrusive and, you know, doesn't, you know, dominate the scene. And the library will have to get a repair that's more expensive than a refresh and less expensive than a rebuild. That's what I'm going to try to push it towards.
I hope it's in my lifetime.
I, our goal is to get it in the lifetime. We're actually doing the Capitol Budget. We're actually meeting with the affordable housing developer. There are two we've been talking to about how to put, how to do the housing in there. I like the townhouses because we do them as ownership. And, you know, we would not get that opportunity if we were going to go high rise. That would be really challenging. And, you know, the economics of going high rise are just bad. If you get over five or six stories and you're in concrete, then the cost per square foot is so high that it's not even reasonable to ask a developer to make a whole lot of it affordable because the numbers are bad. So I try to keep things, if we're being intentional, in the range of stick built structures, you know, four and five story buildings, because the cost per square foot is significantly different. If the county is going to play a role in subsidizing those units, it's a lot easier to subsidize that than it is to subsidize, you know, units that cost, you know, twice as much per square foot. So that's how I'm looking at it.
Thank you for coming to our town and I'm the co-chair of the town. No disrespect to you, just want to make sure about the chair.
I'm the co-chair of our town's climate and environment committee. And I want to give you a quick kudos to the county about something and a quick question. Kudos is your Department of Environmental Protection. They're doing some great work. They have a great website on electrification. And I spoke to someone the other day, Larissa Johnson, in that department. And she was most helpful and informative. And it's really appreciated, appreciated the good environmental and climate change work that the county's doing. Keep it up and do more. My question is, will you support and push the town council to pass a county ban on gas powered leaf blowers? I'll point out, as you probably know, that the village, Chevy Chase Village, Somerset, and of course, the whole District of Columbia have such a ban. And our town has, currently has a partial ban on gas powered leaf blowers.
I was told that the bill is moving. And so if it's moving, it means that they think it's going to pass. So hopefully in the next, I think it should be in front of the council within a few weeks. And then it should pass because they're already done their hearing. So I'm excited about it. I mean, I think the sad thing is you can't say the real reason why you're doing it. You can't talk about climate. Can you imagine the federal government saying you can't talk about climate? But they did. So the federal government rules are you cannot talk about gas, gas leaf blowers and climate change. You can't talk about the pollution, which is odd because it's one of the most polluting things you do and it's really bad for people's ears. So it's, it's the constraints, we worked this through, but we got a bill through where we don't use that word. You don't suggest it as anything to do with climate change. It's just better for everybody.
Well, I hope you're right. That would be great.
It's very close. It looks really good.
So you're thinking positively about it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Now we know who you are.
I was just, I haven't been paying that much attention, but I was just wondering what the status of, is of subdividing our 16 neighborhoods, the lots. Tina Copeland.
So nothing in Thrive allows them to subdivide your lot?
To clarify, were you thinking about building multifamily homes on lots? Is that the issue? Ah, okay.
So, so the planning board cannot go in and subdivide your lot. You have meets and bounds. They can't create two lots. Whereas the one, they can go in and say, if you have 6,000 square feet, you're allowed to build two or three houses on 6,000 square feet or four, depending whatever, whatever they come up with. You know, they, if the purpose was affordability, the planning board did a study and they looked at Silver Spring, East Silver Spring. And they said, what would happen if these lots were turned into three or four unit lots? And the study said they would be more expensive than the existing housing. This is just a bunch of nonsense. There are a few developers whose specialty is townhouses and they would love to get a hold of the fringes of the neighborhoods and fill them with townhouses. And, you know, the beauty of it from a developer's perspective, if I do this one lot at a time with an LLC for each group of units, I never trigger the moderately priced building unit requirements. Cause you have to do 20 units in a development. So you, these guys will skate. And if you looked at their proposal for, if you have to call the housing component that they pulled, but they had a section there about allowing small apartments in neighborhoods. They said, we'll allow 15 unit apartments. That's below the MPDU level also. So none of them would have been affordable units. It's like, these people aren't stupid. So it's like, not like an oversight. I hate it when somebody says, oh, thank you for pointing that out. It's like, you knew it. You're a professional. You know what the rules are. I didn't point anything out you didn't already know. You just think you can get away without telling people what you're doing. So it worries me what they're thinking about. And, you know, I don't worry about deep penetration in neighborhoods at first. I worry about carving off the edges. There is something to be said, though, just for single family houses in general, we're not building them anymore. And people are leaving Montgomery County to go to Frederick and Carol and Howard where they still can get a single family house. Because that's what they want. And the idea that if you not only don't build new single family houses, but you reduce the supply of existing single family houses, the only thing that'll do is drive up the cost of the remaining single family houses for people who want it to compete more. So that becomes less affordable. And what they'll put in their place would be expensive townhouses, which doesn't deal with race equity issues. So, you know, there's a lot of glorious talk about, you know, what this is going to do and most of it's nonsense.
It's heartening to hear your remarks about the, the question of affordable housing. When Mr. Glass was here last May, I objected to some of these crazy high buildings. And I, I wonder what, you know, we need some data, like what is the net increase in the so-called? You know, he said, it's all about affordable housing. And I don't know why the Post hasn't done a big spread. So what is the net increase in affordable housing and how is it defined?
So it's flat out untrue. And it is, so I'll give you an example. There is, there are two red brick developments on, I always get confused. Battery is that William Bradley is, okay, so on battery. So there are two, two built, two complexes. That one's a single building. The other one is, I think, a couple of buildings. The single building has, I'm going to get this wrong, but it's something like 84 existing units. And by our data, all the units are what you call naturally for incurring affordable housing. If it built an MPDU, all those units would be in the MPDU price range. MPDUs are not affordable housing. If you really are thinking about affordable housing, they serve people between about 60 and 70% of AMI, which is in this market somewhere 60 to $75,000. So it's not the poor people. It's nothing for the 50,000 households in the county who spend 50 and 60% of their income on housing. Nothing gets built for them. And nobody's particularly interested in doing that. So this is what, this is what it's limited to. So when that project gets replaced, they build 399 units and the county gets 60 moderately priced building units. So you go from 84 to 60, they go, they go from 84 to 399. The other project is equally insane. You go from almost 400 units to, I want to say 1,300 units. It's like a tripling of the density. And you wind up with, all those units were also affordable. All those, the new units are between 170 and 220. So you're going to have a major loss of units. The units that come back in, you know, will fit the same profile, but nothing more deeply affordable. And the other problem in Bethesda and other places is there's nothing between an MPDU and market. And so we're seeing this with a lot of young people, you know, maybe not so young people, where your income is above 75 or 80,000. You don't make enough money to qualify for an MPDU. You don't make enough money to qualify for an MPDU. But if you make 80,000 a year, you can afford 2,400 a month. That's 30% of what you make. And 24,000, that's 2,000 a month. Sorry, you can afford 2,000 a month. You, you won't find a new one bedroom apartment in Bethesda for $2,000. One bedrooms are basically 2,500 to a little over 3,000. Two bedrooms are north of 3,000, up to 4,000. Three bedrooms are north of 4,000, as much as 7,000. So anybody caught in the middle is stuck. So if you wanted a community that just didn't have the, the people at 60 to 70 and then a bunch of very wealthy people, you can't get the ones who are more in need and you can't get the ones who are trapped in between. We're going to propose legislation to change all of this. We're going to propose that new development has to be one third affordable in a range from 30% of AMI, which would be about $30,000 up, up to probably 100% of AMI, which is about $110,000 so that you can actually house a complete community. And this is another thing that drives me crazy about parking planning. You're supposed to be planning a community where everybody can live in. You should not be planning a community where you know your decisions will lead to a whole bunch of people not being able to live there. So we're going to make a proposal that says, if you really believe in complete communities, you believe in racial equity and opportunity, then the housing needs to reflect it and developers need to be building that space. So hopefully we can push the, the council to do that. Or I'm, I've talked with the state, to the planning people there about, because the state could do this, they could require that any jurisdiction doing a master plans would have to do a racial equity analysis for any master plan they do. Because they're not doing a racial equity analysis on anything they do. So if people in Tacoma Park is, you know, the county or the city should develop programs to minimize loss of housing. That's their nod to equity in this, just not the way the world works. So we're going to try to make this a little bit more difficult. We're stepping in, we'll be building buildings. We'll be partnering directly with developers to build because we can build over a wider range. We've got a project on, off of Veers Mill and Randolph Road that's almost 200 units and it runs a spread of, a spread of about 30% of AMI to 80% of AMI. We've talked with other developers, the ones that we're looking at our property to give us a wider range of affordability. I don't, I don't want you to just give me, you know, a few low income units. I need something that everybody should be able to live there. And it's a shame over here that they didn't think about it. And one of the arguments I made is they should have tented around, tented down around the edges, you know, you, if you're putting a tall building on top of the metro, that makes some sense. But when you want the same densities at the edges of a downtown, real downtowns don't look like that. Real downtowns tend from the core to the outer limits. The walk shed for, for businesses is half mile. The walk shed for, the walk shed for residents is a half mile. Walk shed for businesses is a quarter mile. So when you put density beyond those points, you're looking at people who are going to be driving, not walking. So there, there are basic rules out there that even Virginia follows. And it really hurts when you have to say even Virginia follows. But Virginia's gotten much more sensible about their development and their tax structures. And that's why they create problems for us. It's like, they've figured things out better than we have.
Is there anyone else in here that would like to, and I'd like to give an opportunity for those on the line, if they, those who are listening in right now that would like to ask a question of the county executive, just please raise your hand. Hi Beverly, please go ahead.
Hi, hi. Thank you for taking time to come and meet with us this evening. And I was very excited to hear what you were talking about with University of Maryland and the life sciences project. And I'm, I'll say this, I'm hoping rather than ask the question, I'm hoping that there will not be a competitive situation with Hopkins and NIH and the new moonshot initiative that's getting ready to stand up. I guess here's the question, is it your sense that all of these really good organizations are going to work together?
Yeah, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, I think they will. I mean, everybody has their own space. I mean, Hopkins does work that Maryland doesn't necessarily do. A lot of work gets done by the companies themselves. What we're trying to do is amplify the research that anybody wants to do over there. I mean, I think it in terms of, a lot of the scientists I met who were using AI, learned AI after they were scientists. And the goal is to have scientists to learn AI at the very beginning of their career. So as they approach a problem, they're thinking about, how do I use this tool in this, in drug discovery and treatment? So, you know, we think it's symbiotic. NIH is very happy with this. They're interested in places for their postdocs to go. The companies are interested in this because they want a different kind of talent. It's one of the other decisions we'll probably make is there are a few pieces that we're missing in the life sciences world here. We don't have a low end incubator, which, which is kind of a startup incubator, has low rents, it doesn't have a lot of bells and whistles. But there's some pretty amazing companies that start that way. We don't have that kind of facility in the county. We don't have a true accelerator. So if somebody's really good, we don't have a place and say, we're going to elevate you over here and we're going to get you launched into the market. And the next step is you go out on your own and get your own space. So we want to hit on the, on both ends of the incubator market. And we want to create, and we have two proposals we're looking at. One would create job training for lab workers and would be able to train a lot of people. And that's a talent, it's a big talent issue. And so companies won't come to places where there's not talent. And so we're trying to make sure we've got talent. And the other one is a, a space where you can actually learn how to use manufacturing machinery, which some of these places are going into low level of manufacturing for drug trials, you know, clinical stuff, not necessarily for big drug production. But it's an attract, it's an attractive thing and you need workers who can do that. And we may consider setting up a small manufacturing facility for people who want low volume. I talked to companies, I talked to one company in particular that built their own, but only after they were sending their stuff to San Diego to get produced. And they, this, they realized they were spending more getting it produced in San Diego than they would have spent if they had stood up their own facility. So we're going to try to identify what the industry needs and supply it. It's not a lot of money. It's not going to break the bank. And, you know, the, the attitude we got to take on all this is this is investments. Because these companies take off and they hit products, it's all going to come back. So we, we need to be partners in this.
Yes, sir.
I'm actually a professor at Georgetown and I have a lab that studies oncology. And we're trying to use AI for treating glioblastoma. And we're trying to spin off some companies and we're questioning where to put those companies, so.
Come to us.
This is very timely.
So here's my business pitch. We, we've got, we've got, we've got move grants. If you're coming here, we will pay to help pay your initial rents. We have grants for employees based on the number of employees you have. If you're a foreign company, which you're probably not, we're offering them, we're offering with them to get them incorporated in the United States and get them familiar with both the SBA process, but also the FDA processes. So we're trying to offer a soft landing for people. And if you come to Montgomery County, you're going to be in the midst of a whole bunch of amazing people doing this kind of work. And so you'll only benefit from being in an environment where everybody wants to talk about this stuff. I mean, me personally, I, during COVID, I started doing all these visits because these folks are really playing important roles. And you kind of realize what these, what they're doing. And it's just so different than what I imagined they were doing. And it's, it's really the work you, that was obviously remarkable and it's changed with AI. So we're, we're trying to offer that. We're also, I didn't mention this, we're doing foreign shopping. So we went to Taiwan in March. We've brought back three or four companies that want to locate here. We've been approached by a chip company and a battery company. We don't know how far that'll go, but at least we've got an MOU in the works with the chip company. So I'm trying to make sure we can, you know, demonstrate we can do anything. I go to India and Vietnam at the end of October. And we've got meetings set up with government officials in both countries. We've got meetings set up with science companies already in both companies, both countries. In March, we go back to Taiwan. They invited us back to a conference. And so we'll go further fishing over there. And then in May, we go to China and South Korea. And I've discovered something I didn't realize that in other countries, because the government plays a really large role in what they do, that going as a county executive and saying, I'm interested in this, has been really taken positively by people over there. It's like, well, it must be serious if elected officials over here talking about it. I didn't, I never thought, because what do I know? And, and I don't have dollars, but um, there is, there is an appreciation for that. I'd say in Taiwan, people knew us. This is the, the beauty of some of the reputation we've gotten for being welcoming and multicultural place that we had a meeting first day we were there. We offered tea, we didn't know who was going to come. We wound with 50 people in the room, which is far exceeded our expectations. But the best part was there are people in the room who had worked at NIH, people had worked at FDA, and they started talking about why Montgomery County was the place that people should go to and do things. So here you are with an audience of people who don't even know who we are. And they're hearing from their own Taiwanese neighbors that if you're thinking about going to the United States, this is the place you want to land. And that with the Korean ambassador and they said, you know, Koreans like to come to Montgomery County because we feel safe there and you have a reputation for protecting people. All of this little stuff we do is playing out in other places. And it's just kind of interesting to see. I don't, you know, I disagree, we do the stuff we do. It's welcoming, we're nice people. This is good. But it's good when other people feel like, you know, it's a reflection of who we are. And if you're making decisions, it's a good reason to come here.
Thank you. I'll give one more opportunity for the folks on the line. Otherwise, I, I think we're going to wrap up. Thank you, sir, for all of your time. Oh Meyer, so sorry, please.
Meyer.
No, so I just briefly mark, a, a number of us belong to mom's demand sensible gun law.
Yeah.
And action is the right term. But I wanted to thank you because you've personally been involved in that, particularly when we asked you to come to one of our big events, you were there for the whole event. And it wasn't just your walking in and tipping your hat, so to speak. We're there and you were even clothed in what we were asked people, you know, the colors of that organization. So gun control is important to our community, our schools, our residents, and you're right there. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I hope everything's cool with your kids. No COVIDs in anything.
Well, right. No, I, you know, we feel lucky. We've got, Kathy and I have grandkids in the school system now. And we also have. That the schools are safe. I think the county is doing a good job. But what's important in this mom's organization is very strong.
I will continue to help. And thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much. All right, let's get started, shall we, with the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, welcome everyone. So request has been made to start with the variances, if it's okay with my colleagues, because I understand folks are here on behalf of the speed bump for, or maybe not, or Aspen Street. That's you. Very excellent. And Meadow Lane, who's the, there you go. Okay, we got everyone. So we figured, you know, you've been through a lot already. Let's, let's start with that. So the first public hearing is with respect to a speed bump installation on Thornapple Street. Dave, would you like to provide a, a short, wait, we, we do not have our attorney here present today because we had to change our meeting and can't be at two places at once. Dave, you'll start with like the, whatever sort of legalese that we need to say so that we pass this through accordingly and proceed.
Sure. Yeah, actually, there isn't really any legalese. I guess that we've received a request from the residents in the 3,904,000 block of Thornapple Street to install a third speed hump. Following our policy, the traffic engineer went out and determined that there was an appropriate location for the hump. We did a speed and volume study that did not show that it met the threshold for automatic approval under the town's policy, but it was very close. So the council decided to hold a public hearing to consider the request. If the request is approved, we would install the hump following the completion of the WSSC water main replacement work, which has started. We did get one email, and I don't know if you saw it, before the hearing from the Harpers supporting the request. And that's the only correspondence that we've received since we sent out the read packet.
Thank you, Dave. Do my colleagues have any questions?
None for me.
Sir, would anyone like to put forth a motion? Ah, geez. Anybody would have a question, yes. So Thornapple, in between Meadow and Connecticut, there's two speed bumps already on that segment, street segment. The intent is to put one equidistant and the third, a third one, it's in between the two of them that are already there. So per the traffic engineer, there's, there's plenty of room to, to do that. It wouldn't be one of these types of things for drivers. So that's where it would be placed. Yes, Lou?
I'm curious, how does it get determined where to do it? I mean, I haven't read the, the attachment to the agenda. And I don't know what the technicality is. I'm just curious, you know, do they necessarily need to distance from one speed bump to the other? And would they do the distance to see how fast you can go or how much you want to reduce it? When the speed is running?
Yeah, so the town's policy has standards for how far speed humps need to be from intersections, how far they need to be from other speed humps, how long the block has to be to support the installation of a hump. And then once it's determined that the block qualifies, the engineer goes out and looks to make sure that there's a location that doesn't interfere with driveway access, doesn't go over top of utility manholes and valves. And so they determine sort of a best fit based on the site conditions. So as part of the review, the town does a speed and volume study where the town has adopted a standard by which if there are a certain number of cars during the day that travel over 25 miles an hour, or more than 20 vehicles in any hour of the day that travel over 25 miles an hour, then the speed hump is considered to be warranted based on the speed and volume of the cars.
And that's automatic?
Yeah, so if it doesn't meet that, then.
Right, then they have to come in here, right?
Correct.
Right, and it was just, just below that threshold because the, the threshold is wide and sometimes it's like, it's so far below, we're like, yeah, no worries. Yes, Chris? So again, it all starts with a petition by, by the segment, meaning the, the street segment. So in this case, the, the residents on Thornapple, they're all, all signed off on it. I don't believe there was anybody who objected. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that is slightly different from what your experience might have been where people were not interested in, in having a, a speed hump installed. So just depends. Same thing with, with street, the LED stop signs, other things, like it, it all goes through to make sure the residents are, how they, how they feel about it. sure the residents are, how they, how they feel about it. Any other questions or comments? Any comments? So just because you were not at the podium for a second, just to mention that, for the record, that you were the one who, what is your name? I'm sorry. Christian Barnett had initiated the petition for Thornapple. What has been found is through the apps like Waze, effectively, anyone coming off of the beltways now being directed to go onto Thornapp, that segment of Thornapple, to get through the town and make their way over to Bethesda in a much easier manner, I suppose. So, yeah, so that's, that was the comment there. Well, I'm, any other comment? I don't, I, I went out of order before, so I want to make sure. Any other comments, questions?
I have one comment. The, since the whole street's going to be repaved, so I take it, none of this is going to be done until after the repaving. So I had asked staff whether it made sense then to plot out the three speed bumps, if we'd have, go to three in their optimal locations, not necessarily requiring that the two existing speed bumps stay exactly where they are. The answer that we received was that actually, where those, if you put a third there, the other two pretty much stay in the same place anyway, that it's already more or less optimally set. So the third would simply go in between, as Irene said.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Now, a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The ayes have it. It's passed. Thank you. The, the next variance.
It was also all because of your eloquence.
Is, and hopefully someone's on the line, is for 4,100 Aspen Street. Is there anyone representing? Hello, sir?
Here. Hi, this is Ed. I'm Sandy Lake Cox. Hello.
Hello, hello. So just for your edification, the council has received your, your information, the, the application, and all the supporting materials. But if there is some initial comments that you would like to make, doesn't need to even be a full summarization, but just any initial comments that you'd like to make about this particular variance you think would be helpful. Just please, you, you have the floor.
Thank you. Well, first of all, the, the address is 4,100 Aspen. As you know, there's a large sort of pit area that has, we are trying to fix up and spruce up. It's, you know, candidly, in our opinion, kind of an eyesore. It's also very steep. There's an existing fence there that is just a, I don't even think it's four, quite four feet, chain link. Some of the chain link, as you get to the corner and in the back, has come apart. So what we're trying to also do is put in a pool and at the same time, spruce up and fix the pit area, which would include the fence. The pool requires a five-foot fence, but it's, it's also about safety. We don't feel like the four-foot fence is quite safe enough. I, I've witnessed children easily try to climb over the fence and almost get there. And it's pretty steep. There's a sinkhole down there. There's a, there's a drain that actually belongs to us. It's not even a county or town drain. It, it actually belongs to us. So from that standpoint, we were hoping for this variance, for, for those reasons, to make it safer, make it look nicer. That's it.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions?
Not for me. No question.
Are there any questions from the audience or folks who are online? Okay, we could open up for discussion.
Yeah, I do have a comment. I went by the place, and I was, I had not really looked closely at it before, though I've seen the work you're doing on your house, but not really looked closely at the property. And I was struck by how really steep that falloff grade is. And that, that was very clear. And a lot of it is obscured by the underbrush there, but you can see through it. So I can certainly appreciate your comment that this is a very unusual situation. I can't think of another family that has such a steep drop off immediately, you know, next to, almost next to a sidewalk like that. So I did take on board at that point that you made in your application.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions or discussion points? So I agree. I think this is why we have variance process. This is a very unusual lot. I live a few doors down, so I've been eagerly anticipating this, this construction Friday, and also the replacement of, of the fence. So thank you for, for doing this. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the variance.
Thank you. And is there a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Sir, you, it is passed, but just note, it still needs to go through and be written up by our town attorney. That takes approximately 10 days until you receive a signed notation, according to this. There isn't any, anything that can be done before then, but just hold tight. We'll do our best to get the information to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there any need for us to stay on tonight?
Unless you would love to, we, we have lots of very interesting topics, the recovery. You're more than welcome to stay on and have it in the background, but no. Yes, that's right. Gas horn. There's
Listen in off camera. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, take care. Great. So we have a third variance, which is a retaining wall and driveway on 6812 Meadow Lane, sir, and you're representing that. You are very welcome to come up to the podium and provide, just as we mentioned before, we've received the materials and, but you're very welcome to provide a, a statement of whatever you feel is important towards this particular variance.
So thank you for your time. And I could just say that
State your name for the record.
Okay, I'm Dr. Nagi Ayad. We live at 6812 Meadow Lane, and we are looking to expand our driveway just enough to get our cars in. We have a retaining wall, two retaining walls, one of which is leaning and broken. Our driveway is broken, and we would like to expand the driveway in such a manner to allow for electric charging station for our vehicle. So that's one of the main reasons. Also, to allow elderly people, including my in-laws, to be able to get out of the cars.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions? Are there questions from anyone in the room or online? Yes, sir. If you wouldn't mind standing up.
Lou Evangelis, again, it's just a question of all the variants, how do they impact other cases? Or do we see these as one of every time, especially in terms of driveways? Because we have shared driveways, we have individual driveways. So as we approve larger, wider driveways, does that then mean we are tending towards wider, larger aprons and driveways? That's just a question, an observation.
Certainly, if you want to capture it.
I, this, this doesn't change the app, the apron coming in off of the street, right, Dave?
Correct.
Yeah. For the most part, it's after you get through the, our right of way, that the, that most of these variances are asking for wider driveways on the property. So as far as the town is concerned, most of the, you know, we're not increasing the number, the width of the cut through onto our street.
Also, also, I just want to add, the, the variances that we've seen in this particular instance over the years, at least at the time that I've been on the council, right? Not only is the apron not affected, but these are driveways of which there's two retaining walls, one on each side. So it's not as if it's a driveway that's just a, you know, kind of the land goes, goes from that, and they're just looking for a wider driveway. But there's something just blocking, in this case, two retaining walls are blocking the ability to open the car doors. So that is a function of having bigger cars in our society. So it's, but it isn't changing our ordinances in any way. It's, it's, it's not. So, yeah. Yeah, go ahead. You're very welcome.
I don't want to be a stickler, but just that when I built the house, we were constrained by pervious and impervious surfaces. And we had to do some calculations, and then we had to build in tanks retaining water and all that. So when I look at driveways now, I wonder, is that impervious or pervious? Because I feel like we were required to do pervious, a certain amount. And so as driveways become larger, do they, in an existing construction, that new construction, do they, does it come into play that question of water retention or not, whether it's concrete, whether it's a certain, you know, blocks with water that's able to penetrate through the
Pervious, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, it's just, again, like the speed bumps, I'm thinking a little bit outside the box, just to get educated.
Sure, sure. Dave, please, yeah.
Sure. Under the, the town has a water drainage ordinance that's applicable to all projects in the town, where if you add 700 or square feet or more impervious surfaces or semi-pervious surfaces within any two-year period, the town requires a water drainage plan, which was applicable for your new house construction. This project is less than 700 square feet of new area, so it's exempt from those regulations.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, it's open for discussion on the council or?
I appreciate your point about the fact that there are two retaining walls. I think that's the whole issue here. And when we did some hardscape in our property, I found out, if you pull a car into a gar, into a, into a driveway, and you want to open up both doors, and people are going to get out, you need some serious space. And then often those doors go out over the grass, which may not be a problem if you have that openness. But when you do have retaining walls, it's a real serious problem for people to get in and out of their cars comfortably. So just speaking personally, over my eight years in the council, I've actually had very few requests for variances in driveways, by the way. It's not normal. It's not, that's not typical. But when they come, they're almost always involving situations such as these. And I personally, over the years, have been very sympathetic because people should be able to use their driveway. It's not their fault they have a retaining wall. It's the nature of the property's elevation. But they do have to be able to, to use them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, if you want to. A lot of exercise today, go.
I understand the concern, but also, when you have an electric vehicle, it's almost impossible to have two retaining walls and to charge your vehicle. So it's
Okay. Great. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve this variance to expand the width between the retaining walls at 6812 Meadow Lane.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. Sir, again, please allow time for the town attorney to write everything up and be in touch accordingly. And good luck with the rest of the project. All right. Great. So let's go back to the rest of the, or the original agenda, and we'll have the financial report. Rich? It'll be after the financial report? Yes, after the town manager's report and then public.
I feel really good after hearing the county's
You might get questions about the tax.
The, one of the things I've always kind of looked at is where we are in the, in the budget year, and then how much we've spent in percentage against the, how far we are in the year. And we've, we're 17% through the year. 18% of our budgeted operating revenue has been received. So we've got more than we budgeted for. And we spent approximately 13% of the budgeted operating expenditure. So we've underspent what we planned on. There isn't any category that we've exceeded, any major category that we have, we've exceeded 17%. So we're, we're in fine shape.
Thank you.
Yep.
I noticed our insurance costs went through the roof, but I guess that's the case for everybody these days.
Sorry. Sort of one-off, so they won't increase any longer. We pay our insurance premiums upfront, as you'll see, as the, as the year progresses, the fiscal year progresses, there are some accounts that will reach 100% very quickly, because we pay our, we pay the premiums or whatever that might be upfront at the fiscal year, and others aren't like that. But that's, that's a phenomenon that we see with insurance premiums specifically.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, Todd, town manager's report, please.
Sure, I'll review some of the staff initiatives over the past month. And a number of these issues, I won't elaborate on, because we'll be discussing them as part of the additional or the discussion items later in the meeting. Staff assisted with responding to the Corso Chivi Chase redevelopment. We worked with the traffic engineer to review and submit comments on parking and site access studies, and also worked with our consulting engineer to review and draft comments on, on the stormwater management concept plan and, and report. Both of, of these items will be discussed later in the meeting. We assisted with the Bethesda Market Park development project, including attending the bi-weekly team calls, coordinating a tour, and attending, coordinating a tour of Arlington County interactive water features called spray grounds, and attending a site tour of Metropolitan Park in Arlington County, as Barney had indicated previously. Staff scheduled and attended a number of council work sessions on gas power leaf blower ban, the Bethesda Market Park project. We continued to manage town park and waterway improvement projects, including Zimmerman Park renovations and Coquelin Run stabilization. And I'll tick through some of these projects that Dave is, is the primary point staff person on. And if you have any questions on them, we can return after I review them. We worked with a town civil engineer to develop concept plans for stormwater management renovations, excuse me, stormwater management improvements on Leland and Woodbine Streets. We addressed median cleanup on Connecticut Avenue and sidewalk accessibility issue at Connecticut and Bradley. We coordinated the forthcoming installation of those additional storm drain inlets that the county agreed to install at Oak Ridge and Maple. And as I understand it, those will be installed as soon as next week. We paved Aspen Street between Connecticut and Meadow and installed safety striping around town to improve pedestrian crossings. We coordinated with WSSC an upcoming water main replacement and repairs on Thornapple Street and Leland Street, which have begun, actually. They're not upcoming any longer. They've just begun. Staff met with some Papco officials regarding LED streetlight conversion. I can't really report much. That's very enlightening from those, from those discussions, other than it just doesn't seem like they are quite ready to, or clear on the offerings they're providing to those communities who want to convert, nor do they have a, a very clear schedule on, on when a system-wide conversion might take place. So the meaning to me was premature. They just didn't have the answers that, to the questions that we had for them. We're preparing to rebid the household organic waste collection, the composting contract, which expires the end of this calendar year. And we completed the Rosemary Triangle Plant Inventory, as was requested by the town council. I'll come back to this in a moment. We assisted with the FY23 audit. We ordered new, some new furniture and chairs We ordered new, some new furniture and chairs for the town hall and provided project support to town committees. Going back to Rosemary Triangle plant inventory, as requested by the council, we did this initial inventory and we found that the plants in, in the planting beds, as well as the trees, include some non-native species, but there are no invasive species. And there at Tolbert, our arborist, found a persistent weed in one bed that's very hard to control because the town's policy is not to use herbicides or pesticides. So from a maintenance standpoint, purely from a maintenance standpoint, town staff and contractors can address the persistent weed by general maintenance activities, including tilling the bed, removing the plantings and replanting that one planting bed, hopefully taking care of that one persistent weed. But further to the point of Rosemary Triangle improvements, you know, the council has been discussing these, they've reviewed and, and discussed the climate and environment committee's proposal for Rosemary Triangle improvements. And staff is asking council this evening if there's any additional direction you'd like to give to us and want improvements the council may wish to consider for this space so that we can provide appropriate documentation in the form of either sketch plans or rough order of magnitude costs, understanding of course that whatever direction it might be given to the, to the staff this evening, this matter will obviously be discussed and decided on at a subsequent council meeting.
All right, well, thank you, Todd. So it's, it's great news, there isn't any invasive species. That's, it's all really good. And, and what I heard was that through maintenance, that will be taken care of and whether it's a native plantings, hopefully something colorful, whatever, you know, you guys can, can determine accordingly. I think one of the things that we were discussing, and, and I can throw it back to my colleagues as well, is the potential for placing a bench somewhere in the park. So, you know, every other park in town, Pocket Park or otherwise, has, has at least one bench there. So I'm thinking about things in terms of making sure everyone, you know, equitable, whether you call it equitable or just ensuring that the same amenity is available at each park, that placing a bench on, in somewhere would, would be amenable. What do you all think?
Can I go?
Of course.
I mean, we heard from, when we initially, or when the committee initially produced the plan...
Yeah.
You know, there was a huge outcry of concern from neighbors. And one of the concerns was they didn't want to see, you know, become a really...
Amusement park.
Amusement park-like thing. Given that there, you know, that there was that concern...
Alexa, stop the music.
I think we, we, we all talked about, well, what could you do? Not creating an amusement park, but making it of, it's a beautiful place and when it flowers and it, it's nice to have it. And to, for people to enjoy it and to really enjoy it. I think a lot of people, especially in our town, I, I've just looked at the census, 2020 census, I was trying to pull it up. But there are, there are a significant, probably a third of the town is 65 or older. And I think having the ability to sit somewhere along there as you walk is, is an excellent idea. I don't see putting 20 benches there, but certainly a, a, one, two or three benches. But I, I'd like, certainly like to see some sketch plans for some of those, you know, where they could be located without disturbing, without having to significant regrading and reconfiguring of that property. And I think there are places there that you could put some benches. That would be very nice for the, for the town to have.
Thank you. Any, anyone else?
I, oh, sorry, Steph. I agree, and I would, I would just add that I don't believe that in that particular section of town there are a lot of benches right now. So if you live in that area and you're walking and you want or need a place to sit, I don't think there is a lot of availability right now. So I think I second the idea of getting some sketches to see what we can do with doing, making as few changes to the current park and landscaping as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's exactly your sentiment for exactly those reasons. And I think, I'd like to think this could ask the town staff to look at bench or two that could be close to the sidewalk. So especially for the elderly or other people who are disabled, they don't have to walk far onto the grass to get to the bench.
Well, especially because there's a deep depression.
Well, well, exactly, that's right. But even so, there, there are probably places you could figure where you might, the point is, trying to keep it close to the sidewalk would be desired.
Yeah, because it does need to be ADA accessible. So whatever it is, wherever the placement is, we have to make sure that that concrete, you know, it's kept to a minimum and we preserve the space. Joy, your thoughts?
Yeah, those are my thoughts, exactly. And I think the, you know, the, the committee would also appreciate, you know, whatever the town could do to enhance the plantings. I think I heard the last time we had a meeting that there would also be some interest in more flowering plants at different parts of, at different times, different seasons, right?
Yes, yes, that's exactly right.
Because there is, there is a certain part in the season when it is simply breathtaking and then there are other parts in the season when you wish it were more breathtaking. And so, you know, I think that is definitely warranted. And I'm also very much in favor of having at least some, some seeding that's easily accessible without having to open up any hardscape.
Thank you. So I'm hearing, Todd, that colorful, four-season colorful plantings if possible in that area. And then we'll, we'll, we'll allow for you all to, you know, with respect to where you think a, a bench would be best placed, given the other requirements for ADA and, and the like. And let us know what these, where it might be, placement might be and what it would cost and...
Do you object to more than one bench?
I don't know exactly where the, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that, that it's, people like the space for its pristine nature and I don't want to introduce a lot of concrete.
That's why I would like them to take a look at the site.
I'm going to leave it to, to, to the experts here, which I am not, to figure out what, what would work best in this situation. So, and of course, you know, making sure that the area neighbors understand that this is just not, not something that was going to turn into an amusement park, but something that will be another serene space for them to enjoy. So I think we're good. Does that help? Todd, is that what you're...
Yes, absolutely. We'll identify appropriate locations for a bench or benches along the existing sidewalks or around the, the triangle and we'll provide, we'll, we'll, we'll provide a planting plan for that one garden bed that needs to be redone to remove that persistent weed and we'll, we'll endeavor to find some four-season colorful plantings.
Okay. Can you, can you come on up? Can you come on up?
Thank, thank you very much to the council members who, who made such supportive remarks just now. That was really good to hear. I would like to know who the committee could coordinate with further. Is it Todd? Because we thought that it would be professionally landscaped, some additional, additional or native plantings or decisions about placement of a bench would be done by professional landscapers?
Yeah, I think that's what we're saying here was that, that with, with respect to what we're talking about for, for additional plantings, it's going to be overtaken as a part of the current professional contract that's in place for maintenance. And then with respect to the bench placement, that's all, because there's so many other requirements in, in play, has to be a level surface. Again, I'm mentioning ADA accessibility and we don't want to necessarily detract from the, the, having as much green space as possible. So that's, we're not going to design that. We're going to try and, and, and hear what the recommendations might be before proceeding there.
Okay. And Barney, we did hear before, at previous meeting, your interest in having a year-round color...
Yeah.
In the, in that space and absolutely we agree and that would certainly be a goal. And what we never intended for, I think, for an amusement park, maybe a pickleball court and a dog park in that, in Rosemary Triangle. But I don't think even our first preliminary proposal ever could have been considered as an amusement park. I just talked about, okay.
Yes, I apologize. I apologize, no, I, I think that, I, I think along the way that there, there are people received information that may not have been entirely accurate. And unfortunately, that, that, that idea kind of spread a, a lot quicker than what the, the reality was. But I think right now we're at a place that is a, a struck a balance potentially that addresses the climate and environment's concern that there might have been invasives in this space. But it, it could have been enjoyed more. And I think that we've come up with a decent balance in that to, to start, start things out and get things more, more color in there and have the ability to enjoy the space in a more passive way, if you will. So, good. Anything else there? Anything else on the, on the town manager's report, Todd? Any other questions about the town manager's report? Okay, so this point, we'll open it up to public comments. And this could be about, yes, sir, any topic that, that is on your heart right now. Come on over, yes. Let us know what you're thinking.
No, good evening. Again, my name is Lou Evangelista. I don't think I've ever said it as many times to have done it tonight. I'm doubting myself, am I, Lou Evangelista? That I live at 4402 Walsh Street and I would like to make some comments about the new traffic sign at the corner of Walsh Street and West Avenue. Somebody's reacting. Okay, it sprang up quite unexpectedly and has raised some chatter in the listserv, as I think we're probably all aware. First, I want to thank the town council for its vigilance and attention to controlling cut-through traffic within the town. And secondly, I want to acknowledge Dave Walton for answering my emails and clarifying the purpose of the new sign and pointing out the important differences between the terms through traffic versus local traffic, which I had never understood or appreciated. You know, they were just words until you see a police officer, right? Or talk to a police officer. Well, while there will always be winners and losers with any traffic restriction, the new sign now appears to place the residents of East Avenue into the losers category since they may have a harder time getting home during 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Monday to Friday. Unfortunately, I don't know how to make life fair for everybody. That's above my pay grade, I just pointed out. In the few days that the sign has been up, I've noticed little change in cut-through on Wall Street, which is good, I must say, which I never thought worth reporting, right? It's never been an issue for me. And except for the occasional vehicle that goes in the opposite to what, of direction of the street, that's, and sometimes it's a, a truck, a utility truck or something, you know. Anyway, that's the situation I experienced. It's been a good street. I told Dave, we're in a nice, we're between the cracks, we're falling between the cracks. Nobody knows about us that much and we're in a, in a, a good, good space for, in terms of cut-through traffic. But my final comment is that the town could have sent notification and explanation prior to the installation of the sign, at least to the residents along the affected streets. So that concludes my comments and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, thank you, Lou. Are there any other comments? So we'll definitely take that under advisement, under consideration. Thank you. And I know there are folks that are on, online, if there's anyone that would like to make a comment. Allison? I see Allison.
Oh, yeah. So, hi, I am new to the town, so I have a question about...
I'm so sorry, can you just state your full name and your address, please?
Oh, sorry, Allison Fox. I live on Stamford Street. What exactly is the rule and the restrictions on leaf blowers? And is it just leaf blowers? Someone explained to me that it's a nine-month restriction. And I just, I do have some comments, but before I did, I wanted to understand what it was exactly.
Okay, yes, so presently it's a, a gas-powered leaf blowers that are un, under a nine and a half, nine, nine months ban, so it's January 1st through October 14th. Gas blowers cannot be used for landscaping use, so we understand that there's people that utilize mosquito control services, which of course are utilizing gas blowers. We understand that there's some use of blowers if they're cleaning out gutters. The intent was just for landscaping, you know, just you've mowed your lawn or whatever and you're, you're clearing your leaves during the months of January, for dates of January 1st to October 14th, cannot use gas-powered leaf blowers. Instead, there's the encouragement and need for, to use battery-powered or electric leaf blowers. Does that answer that question?
Yes, thank you. So is there, under discussion, the question of extending that for a full year? That was my understanding. Is that correct or not?
That's going to be later this, this, this evening and it is on the agenda. If you would like to make a comment about that, that, this is the perfect time to do so, if you'd like to.
Okay, so thank you. I don't have any prepared comments, but I would like to say that I've been working on this in my work capacity somewhat, a little bit informally. And what I've come to learn are the significant question, or the significant emissions, the particulate matter, the contribution to climate change, the noise pollution, the air pollution that's so disruptive to both people and to wildlife, et cetera. I, before living in Chevy Chase, I was living in Bethesda, in which there were no restrictions. So I was at home working remotely and it was incredibly disruptive all year round. And I would say that the extra three months during that period of time, if you look at the California Air Resource Board reports, just the amount of emissions that come during those three months would probably be, you know, astronomical, much more than, than anyone can imagine. I also would take it from the perspective of protecting workers. A lot of people who work for the companies that use the leaf blowers, their health is greatly impacted in a negative way, what they get exposed to in terms of particulate matter and what the emissions. So I think it would be an overall advantage to everyone if we considered expanding this to a full-year prohibition.
Okay.
That's it, that's just my thoughts.
You have some, some applause from the folks here. Thank you very much, Allison. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment tonight? Okay, with that, we're closing public comments, so we'll dive over into the council discussions. And the first topic is Corso Chevy Chase. There's two sub topics on, under Corso today. One is the site access study and the other is the stormwater management concept plan and report. Would you like for me to summarize quickly the, the site access? Okay, so a few weeks ago, Todd, I apologize, I don't recall the date that, that we received the parking, the parket, parking study and site access study. It's like three weeks ago or something like that, potentially.
No, I'm ahead of that.
Yeah, so, um, the Corso is, is, is about to submit a, a site plan and have it be formally accepted by the county. In anticipation of that, we had asked, we had asked for a, a site access study, which particularly goes into how will cars, visitors, residents, emergency vehicles, how will they enter and exit the Corso living, senior living facility? how will they enter and exit the Corso living, senior living facility? Um, and the second part of it was, is there adequate parking? So from it, from a parking perspective, there's a formulaic process used in terms of how many units are expected. This is how much in terms of, um, parking spaces that are needed. It's, it's all formula, and then you take into account the employees, visitors, all of that is taken. And, and it's been deemed that there is actually adequate parking of it, and this is going to be garage parking, um, so that there wouldn't be overflow on area streets, whether it be town streets or in other neighborhoods. The site access study, though, um, came about with a couple of concept ideas for how this ingress egress would take place. And net-net is that everyone would be, there'd be, there'd be, uh, if, if you're, if you're looking at Corso, there's, um, an area that you would, you would be able to go in, and then a separate area that you would go out where you could only take a right-hand turn out of Corso. So let's pretend that somebody wants, is exiting Corso, but wants to head towards four ninety-five or to East-West Highway. Um, the, the current, uh, concept is for, uh, X number of vehicles to essentially, uh, cut through the town. Um, so they would take a right onto Rosemary, a right onto Meadow, make their way over to East-West Highway and eventually points east or points north from there. Um, this, of course, was not acceptable to, to the town in terms of, you know, there's, there's has to be a way to come up with a left, left hand, uh, let, I'm sorry, left turning directly out of Corso. There has to be a way to, to accomplish this. In the meantime, Section Three is also worried about U-turns and, and people cutting through Section Three as well. And they hired a traffic consultant who came up with an alternative, uh, concept plan that allowed for a, um, a left hand to, a left turn, excuse me, out of Corso. So, uh, you would have, uh, you think of it as like a horseshoe driveway, right? And instead of having everyone use the one part to come in and another part to come out, um, the one part you would have in and out for all vehicles, except for emergency vehicles that would have that secondary, um, uh, way to get into the property, which is a legal requirement. Fire and rescue need to, uh, an alternative, two, two ways to come through. So, that's where we're at in terms of the council looking at this concept idea that's come from Section Three. Um, we've also provided the, the concept to our, um, Corso committee. And in essence, the feedback has, has been to, to, you know, please let me know where I've gone wrong here, is that the, um, northbound lanes of, uh, Connecticut Avenue, because there isn't a, 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 a lane specifically, um, acting as a left turn lane into Corso, um, then they, they would wait for light. And they, there could be a lot of traffic. And as what happens in other parts of D C, you could be waiting forever to take a left and be backed up behind. So the request has been to at least accommodate a signal, whether it lasts for three seconds, ten seconds, whatever, a signal that allows for cars to enter into, uh, or trucks to enter into Corso. Um, and then, um, I don't believe there was really any other, um, major commentary. There was some stylistic aesthetic comments, but other than that, um, that's what it is. So what's before us right now is we have this concept plan, um, that, that Section Three is proposing, and they've done initial outreach to the S H A, um, to discuss this. What do we do as a council? Do we, um, entertain a notion of a- asking for time with the developer to just be at the table as the plan is presented by Section Three? Do we, uh, just continue with our, um, requests? That, you know, there has to be some sort of an accommodation made for a left-hand turn out of Corso, and however way it's accomplished is how it'll be accomplished. Uh, how do we move this along, knowing that S H A might take some time in, in making their decision? So, with that, I will.
Oh, no, thank you very much, Irene. You gave a very, a very good and thorough re- review of a, but inevitably is a complicated topic, but very important, obviously, to the town. Uh, if I could have had a couple of things, and, um, I think of pertinent. One is that, that, um, in the binding elements that we negotiated for, uh, is the obligation that the developers consult with the town explicitly regarding traffic issues on Connecticut. So it's not an option for the developers. They have to do that to comply. So we've been given, I would say, a rather senior status compared to other municipalities or other groups, that they have to come and consult with us. And frankly, they came up with their initial plan without having done that, and we called them on that point. Um, also, um, I took the opportunity of speaking with the, uh, the planning department, and Irene and I are going to be meeting with them on.
Friday?
Friday, yeah. Um, where we want to talk about Corso. And, uh, one of the points here is that we expect that the fi- that the, the site plan has been submitted. It's now being reviewed for completeness. Once the completeness is verified, then the clock begins for a four-month process for review of the site plan. For all of us who have had the pleasure of dealing with S H A in respect to the crosswalk, uh, in East-West, uh, at the foot of Maple, we know how long it can take to get anything out of S H A. So we were concerned about the disconnect between the timeframe of working with S H A, even with the best of will on the part of the developers and Section, and Section Three and ourselves, but they just don't move very rapidly. And, 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 and so would that inevitably drag out something beyond the four-month period allowed for the planning board to make its decision? What I was told, uh, by, by Robert Cronenberg, who oversees, is the deputy of the planning department right now, is that actually they feel they have a very good rapport with S H A, and that S H A has generally complied to shoehorn their comments into that four-month process. So he wasn't guaranteeing that, but he said he sees no reason why they wouldn't be able to continue with that. In terms of recommendations, I just offer my own personal thought. I would, I would be wary of endorsing or any particular traffic plan. And that doesn't mean that the Section Three plan isn't excellent. Maybe it is, but I don't know enough to know that. Um, and I think we really want to make clear our point, which is people coming out should be able to turn left, full stop. That's the goal. I'm, I'm a little concerned that if we endorsed a particular plan, that others who might not like it would just pick at that and say, well, since that particular plan doesn't work, therefore we can throw out the whole idea. And we don't really want that to happen. And we want to say, well, if the Section Three plan isn't working, then find another. But the goal here is to allow people to turn left. So I, my personal view is that we're best served by keeping it at a high level. You know, you guys are the experts, we're not, but here's the goal that we believe must be achieved. And you're asking for our consultation. That's what we're giving you. Now, that's, that's my, would be my suggestion.
Do you see a value at all in, in setting up a meeting with the Corso developers and saying, here's just another?
Oh, and that, uh, that's fair. I guess my thinking there is that we want to be at the table for all future discussions with S H A and the developers. I, I, I don't know if it helps a lot to be there at a meeting only with Corso. I'm just brainstorming here. I think the elephant in the room is the S H A. And so we want to make sure that we're there at those meetings. Uh, they are all part of the development review team that is going to be assembled by the planning department. But we want to know that any particular meetings on traffic must include the town. I think that would be my recommendation.
Okay, yes, Stephanie.
Um, I agree, uh, that that's not necessarily a meeting that we absolutely have to be in, but certainly a letter, um, reminding, uh, them of their obligations and stating our intention to really only support a solution that allows, allows a left turn out of the Corso would certainly be appropriate and something that I would support doing. Um, I don't know if there are other, uh, qualifications on the left turn, though, that we might want to go ahead and make, such as, um, any, uh, any parameters around signaling, um, and that kind of thing that, that will, that will need, that we might want to get a little more specific about. I think it's the design, the particular design, that there might not be, like, the plan that Section Three did might not necessarily comport with what the landscape architects think is doable. And so that's why we don't necessarily want to get involved in the middle of that. But if there are signaling issues or whatever, we might, we might want to express some views about that. Or it might be premature to get that detailed. I don't, I'm just kind of putting it out there for discussion.
Well, I actually think, um, I actually like Barney's approach. I mean, you know, we've, we've heard today, uh, from more than a couple of residents about cut-through traffic in the town. I think our primary, uh, um, insistence is that there be no additional cut-through traffic as a result of this development. And how can we accomplish that? There needs to be a signal there. I just, and I agree, Barney, I don't think we need to get into how it's designed. They come up with it, but we just, we don't need any more traffic running through here, for whatever reason. And certainly not because of this new development. There's going to be all of these new employees. It's great that that site is creating more jobs in the county. Um, hopefully, some of those people can actually live in the county. Um, but be that as it may, they don't need to cut through our streets to get home.
Yeah, I, um, I like the idea of just saying that this is our goal. And there's going to be a bunch of professional traffic engineers, both Corso, State Highway, any, uh, town of, Section Three, whoever can hash out the details of what that really, how they accomplish that. And, um, I, I would leave it to them, but I, I, I do think that the left turn, you know, we, we need to say our goals are left turn, no left turn, or left turns, enable left turns out of the, out of Corso, and no increase in the cut-through traffic. I mean, I just think that's, you know, if we lay those two goals out, let the traffic engineers figure out how to, how to accomplish that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, oh, go ahead, Barney.
Just one other final comment about it that, uh, I will propose and see if you guys would concur that, uh, so one of the things we could offer is we're not looking for a hard-wired light all the time. Actually, the employees arrive and depart at off-peak hours, which is a good thing.
No, I agree.
So you could, I think you may have been h- hitting at this, Steph, so I'm just following up on what you're suggesting, that, that we could offer, that there could be a triggered light, basically. So if three cars stack up, then it turns green. But if there are no cars coming out, then it doesn't turn green. So, yeah, it's a way of potentially massaging or softening the issue of, to the extent the obvious opposition's going to be, oh, another signal on Connecticut Avenue. No, this will be intermittent. It's not going to be steady-state.
Right.
What, Rich? You had something?
I, all I, I remember one of the comments was that, you know, the, the, the traffic right now backs up on Connecticut. The entire length of the East-West Highway. Uh, it gets really bad. There, there are some gaps because of the light at Bradley that, that, that some people, but you can't count on that being very long because people are coming left off of Bradley onto northbound, uh, Connecticut. So I, I, the, the idea of a, of a, of a, of a light there, unless it's what I'll call a managed light, either a, a managed light, unless it's a managed light, uh, would be unacceptable. You, you need to have a managed light there, so that it either, you know, well, when there's three cars stacked up, it turns up on and the cars can go, and then it immediately goes off. There's a whole, there's a whole lot of, uh, signalization that can be done there. It doesn't have to be, you stop traffic for thirty seconds. And, and, and it, it just doesn't have to be that. But again, I, I think in our recommendation, we should say we, we need the traffic engineers to figure those kinds of things out, and we can list, you know, some as examples. But, but let, set that as our goal, you know, we don't want.
We don't want cut-through traffic, but we also don't want more backup.
More back, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so with respect to the Section Three concept plan, um, they, we, we can provide the, the additional feedback that, that we received, um, or collectively as well as from the, um, the committee, but just if, if, the, they're welcome to talk with S H A, as, as they've started to do. Um, but for us, we're, we're still, we, we want to remain a little bit agnostic, if you will, as to what the solution's going to be, uh, as long as the solution is presented. Uh, and that we need, once again, reiterating that we need to be at the table when these conversations are occurring.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, are you, are you suggesting we respond to Section Three?
I know, based on the, uh, meeting that Todd and I had with Section Three last Monday, I think it was, the, the eleventh, um, they were specifically, uh, going to, to, uh, contact us tomorrow after this meeting to, to.
And, and, and in that case, I, I think our approach should be given, which would say, look, here's our goals. You know, if you want your traffic engineers and the traffic engineers, you guys sit down and figure it out, but this is our goals, and if you can meet these, we're fine with it. But we're not going to endorse your plan, that we, we're not going to get into the specifics.
They were, yeah, and they were looking for the, the town's endorsement, for, for obvious reasons.
Right, and I, I, I wouldn't endorse their plans for a number of other reasons other than, you know, to, it's not sure that it even meets our goals, but, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I would not, I would not.
Deliver the message. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next topic under Corso is the stormwater management, uh, concept plan. So I'll turn it over to you all, um, Todd and Dave. Dave's looking at Todd, Todd's looking at Dave. Uh, you're on mute.
Well, it's okay. We received Corso's Stormwater Management Concept Plan and Report a couple of weeks ago. We asked our consulting water engineer to review it to determine, um, what questions and comments we needed to, to submit, um, regarding the concept plan to, to Montgomery County Department of Permanence Services, which has primary responsibility for determining, um, the, uh, the, if, if Corso is in fact meeting the requirements, uh, for stormwater management on the property. Uh, Jason Azariaz and Associates reviewed the, the concept plan and report. Um, they've reported out that the developer has generally maintained, uh, the layout of the site as previously presented at the, at the Stormwater Management Kickoff Meeting. Um, Jason's reported that to meet the county's stormwater management requirements. The developer has proposed sixty-seven planter boxes and approximately thirty-one thousand square feet of green roof area. And according to Jason, per the computations, the project is, is fully meeting the county's stormwater management requirements. Jason also noted that the developer has not indicated a stormwater detention system on the plans and has not provided an analysis of, of the storm drainage system that outfalls uh, to the existing system under Meadow Lane. Jason, uh, said that they've not been able to verify what the proposed, as a result of that, they, they can't verify what the proposed development's impact to the storm drain is without such an analysis. Um, he proceeded then to provide, um, a, a memorandum, um, that was reviewed by staff, and, and feedback was given to Jason, and then a copy was provided, a draft copy was provided to the council for review, which is actually part of your, your packet. And he provides, um, comments on the plan, comments on the report, and then just general comments. But the, the major takeaway is that we know that Corso will have to perform a downstream analysis of the capacity, the storm drain system under Meadow, but they have not done yet. They have not done that yet. Now, I don't think there's any way of getting around it. Jason thought that they may be trying to convince DPS that such in the downstream analysis wasn't necessary because they were proving that the, they were detaining, retaining it through the green roofs and other retention devices, the same amount of water that was coming off the property pre-construction. Uh, but Jason doesn't believe that DPS will allow any such, um, a claim to be made without a downstream analysis showing how much water will be put into the storm drain system and what its impact will be along Meadow Lane. And those comments, um, specifically, and, and those observations are included in Jason's comments, proposed comments back to DPS. Specifically, a downstream analysis of the receiving storm drain in accordance with Montgomery County DOT Storm Drain Design Manual should be included to verify the receiving pipe has the capacity to accept this runoff from the proposed development. Alternatively, an onsite detention system, which they're currently not proposing, can be designed and included in the concept to ensure that post-development runoff is reduced to pre-development flow rates. That's the major takeaway with, well, one major piece that's missing from this, from this, the report, the concept planning report is this downstream analysis. And there are other comments that Jason's made that I won't review individually or one by one, but, um, council's had a chance to review it and I believe generally supports the, are, are transmitting these comments to DPS.
There's a deadline to do so, right? Uh, is it 21 days or by September 30th?
That's not really clear. Um, with respect, it is clear with respect to those who are required to be notified of these plans and the town is not an entity that is required to be notified, notified. Um, it's 21 days from, 21 days from submission to DPS, which would be, that I believe it's the 23rd, but if we get our comments in and submitting them by that time, Jason feels that we will have met that comment deadline that really isn't imposed on the town, but that we should try to get our comments in sooner rather than later so that they can take them into account. Because those who were required to be notified have already, we're, we're giving a, we're, we're giving a 21 day deadline, ostensibly so that these comments could be reviewed and incorporated into what is ultimately, um, given back to Corso as, as requirements for them to amend their stormwater management concept planning report. So we, we are fine with getting our comments in. I would, Jason suggests that we should get our comments in by Friday, if that's possible. And I believe generally our draft comments are on point with what our concerns are. And so if I could get council concurrence to transmit these to DPS tomorrow, that would be helpful.
Barney.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Todd, for that good, good overview. Um, yeah, I certainly, my personal view is to, I concur as that we ought to get these in. I think Jason wrote up a really good series of questions. What I'd just like to review for the benefit of my colleagues and for the audience is that there are really two different laws, ordinances that we have to be considering. What, what, but the report that the consultant for the Corso focused on were the obligations of the state law, which is, is monitored by the Department of Permitting Services for all work in the county. And that focuses on a flood, a sort of the worst sort of single year flood and has this whole series of mitigation measures to soak up the water, rain ponds, planters, green roofs, all that kind of stuff, uh, in order to make sure there's no additional runoff. Fine. Set that aside. Separately is what Todd went into more detail on, which is the requirements of the Department of Transportation that oversee, the county department of transportation that oversees the county, uh, wastewater treatment, wastewater, uh, so, you know, um, not wastewater, but stormwater, stormwater, uh, pipes. And they take a different view. They look at a flood as labeled as one in 10 years, so a more severe flood. And in their calculations, they disregard all of the mitigations that are put in to comply with the state law. Because it's their observation that often those mitigations after some years fall into disrepair and aren't, they can't count on them as much. And that, I don't know if that's true, say of green roofs, but it could certainly be true, as we know, of rain ponds and other features that get clogged up and don't work over time. So they just say, let's, we're going to be very conservative. We're going to assume none of that's in place. We're going to look at the one in 10 year flood and now we have to know what's going to happen to the stormwater, uh, system in the town. And so this is why the failure for the Corso report to focus on that was so serious. It's a much more severe storm event and it doesn't make any optimistic assumptions about various onsite mitigation efforts. And, and so whether there is a problem or not, and when, how that problem is going to be solved is what we really want to hear from Corso and their consultants. And if there is an issue of runoff, there are one of two ways they can solve it. One is they put in a detention system on plan, which essentially just means you run pipes back and forth and stack up the water and then sort of feed it on a more gradual basis into the stormwater management system of the town. The other is that you actually allow the water to go into the stormwater management system. And God knows how this developed, but you have to look three manhole covers down the street and see whether the system gets overwhelmed within that distance or not. Well, none of that's been addressed in these plans. So I, I would suggest that when we, and you can get back to Jason, that he really bear down on that point, that that's, we haven't seen that. Uh, and that again, it's very vital for the town to be engaged and at the table in these discussions. Now, I know that the county's a little sensitive, they don't want to give up authority, da, 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 da. But especially given the holes in the developer's report on this topic, I think that should give us some extra feeling of importance to Jason's continuing involvement in these discussions.
Thank you, Barney.
Do, do you think that the letter that we're proposing, that they're proposing to send does that?
Yeah, I think Jason's letter is very good about saying that that whole aspect of the county regulations is not addressed. So I think that it stands very well on its own.
I think before us is, do we just slap a, a town cover letter on top of his memo? He's obviously well-respected within the county, um, as a, as a, you know, knowledgeable person. And, uh, maybe that's all that we need to do to, uh, to bring attention to the situation.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can include a, a very simple transmittal message, simply to say, you know, without, uh, attached our, you know, our, our, our engineers' review of the stormwater concept planning report, uh, without a downstream analysis, as noted by our town engineer, we don't feel that the town has sufficient information to review the impact to town roads or infrastructure. And we'd ask that you work with the applicant to provide acceptable documentation related to the storm drainage system capacity and confirm that there are no negative impacts on it due to the development.
That's fine. Could you also say though, that in this cover letter, that this has been reviewed at the town council meeting? So it's not, just make sure that's clear. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Um, great, great stuff. Thank you. The, uh, the next topic is the Bethesda, uh, Market Park and, and Barney, Steffi and I have had some good visits, but we, we should, we should talk about the positive and talk about the, the visits that we did have to, uh, Virginia and.
Okay, well, uh, Todd, do you want to talk about our visit the other day? You were also on the field trip. Go ahead.
Uh, sure. To Met Park, it was a, um, it's, it's a great facility. Uh, it was still very rapidly, um, primarily because of, of, of Amazon's money being thrown at it. And, um, because it was a, a private, um, development. Uh, it's about the same size as the Bethesda Market Park site, about two and a half to three acres, depending on how you measure it, as we learned. And, um, about the same price tag, it's about 14 million uh, that it costs to develop, which is close to what Bethesda Market Park costs are anticipated to be. JBG Smith gave us a tour, the representative from JBG Smith gave us a tour. Uh, he was able to answer a lot of questions we had about uh, similarities between the post Bethesda Market Park, including that there were underground garages under the vast majority of, of Met Park, as there will be, um, with at least lot 24. And, uh, lessons learned, if you will, about some of the things that they, um, experienced and, and some of the things that they would advise us to, um, consider when, um, we engage in the development of, of the Bethesda Market Park. Marty, Barney mentioned something regarding, you know, turf maintenance and, um, best practices with respect to, um, how to maintain, appropriately maintain turf on a civic green. Shade came up as a particularly important feature of, of the park. Um, and how important it was to provide adequate, a more than adequate shade for park users. Um, they indicated that, the Metropolitan Park is pretty, a pretty high degree of direct sun during the day and, and they see users move, uh, during the course of the day to shaded areas uh, because of, of, because of such hot days and, and they, they seek shade. So shade's extremely important. Um, turf maintenance. Um, they use pea gravel in many places to, um, allow pets to relieve themselves, um, with doggy pots and things like that. Um, what else? Uh, let's see, came up that they have two dedicated dog parks there. There's a small dog park area and a large dog park area. Um, they are concrete base, basis, based on, the bases are concrete. And of course, Amazon has sufficient money that they're responsible for the maintenance of the park and security. And so they host those dog park down, those dog parks down every day um, to clean them and they have a pretty significant maintenance effort, um, ongoing daily, um, to maintain that park, um, in as good a shape as it, as it is. They also provide 24 hour security. And they have a significant active, activation of the park. Um, Amazon, uh, supports and sponsors, farmers markets, um, movie nights, um, and other activities. So there's a, there's a lot of activation of that park that Amazon employees do. Um, it's going to be a little different than what, what we'll see with, with respect to activation of Bethesda Market Park. No, those were the major takeaways that I saw Barney, if you have anything to add, you know, I'd certainly.
I think you hit at that. I think we, we also saw a, um, nearby separate park area being developed that included a, uh, a small water feature, which was very much of the scale that's closer, uh, Steph, and, you know, to what we, Irene, to what we had seen a few weeks ago. Uh, probably went something a little more, a few more fountains, but nonetheless, the scale of it was the size that we're thinking about. Um, but I think the point that you made Todd about the importance of shade is really key. And so I think, um, our view and, and we're happy to know that the developers are planning for uh, strong enough concrete pillars to support planting of canopy trees, uh, is really fundamental here. There will be, of course, with our parks, because of the 17-story tower that's going to go up where Villan and Saints is, and also because of the seven-story tower that's going to go on the, the, the west side of lot 24 behind the Ford building. Uh, that's going to provide shade starting in mid-afternoon in any event. Uh, but nonetheless, there'll be a lot of hours in the morning, which will be quite sunny. So it is, it's something for us to really keep in mind, uh, certainly the strength of the turf as well. But overall, I think what was exciting was to see a park that, that is very similar sort of the more modern concepts of what parks would look like, which is filled with vegetation, sinuous paths curving around, plenty of seating, plenty of places to eat and, and absolutely not just one vast green space with, with lawn. I mean, that's just, that's just not going to be successful. So I think it was all very good and we were there with, uh, the developers and, uh, the park staff. And I think we had a lot of good conversations. Uh, so that was good. Um, I think just elaborate a bit more if I might about the status of where we are, uh, and to fill in some of the gaps of the back and forth with, uh, the county executive. The, the, the problem that we have is that we've been working in the past on a, I'll say two tracks, both of which are essential. One is legal agreements being put in place. And secondly, the progress in the design and allowing the developers to get their site plan done, which triggers the review, which triggers permitting, which ultimately gets to time when they could, they could break ground. And, and yes, they're separate, but not entirely separate. Because what the developer said was, look, you know, as they said this in July, we've been proceeding since November, continuing with our work and paying third-party consultants to do design and everything else. But we're not seeing any of the progress in the legal agreements that we need to see in place in order for us to be reimbursed for, you know, the, on the, on pro rata basis of responsibility across all the partners. This is, this isn't just for us to put our money in out of pocket. And, and they were frustrated enough, they said, look, we, we don't want to go forward further. That stopped further planning and that's, that hasn't, no progress has been made now since July in terms of that. And they instead said, let's put in quickly as possible, an interim agreement, which would permit us to be reimbursed even while we continue to negotiate the final agreement. So it was their good faith effort to try to break a logjam and allow us to continue with planning and, and design work at the same time the legal agreements would proceed. Uh, so I, I think that, that the county executive statement tonight rather mischaracterized the spirit of what the developers were seeking to do. They weren't just changing their minds, they were actually trying to find a way through a, a knot, which was the KNOT, which was that, that, uh, the, the, um, they couldn't see just paying money out of pocket without any assurance of reimbursement. So, um, the, the, that was proposed in July and the Parks Department said, okay, that makes a lot of sense. We're on board. Now, there were a lot of negotiations about some language and about the details of how much legacy cost should be reimbursed, but principle, they were completely supportive. We didn't hear anything back from the county. They didn't say yes, they didn't say no, until last week. They said, no. We don't like the interim agreement. So that is what threw us all for a loop. And, and they now say we have to go back to the permanent agreement and, and, or the final agreement, and we need to have it set up with a guaranteed price, fixed price contract, which in itself is unobjectionable. But as the developer said, in order for us to give you a fixed price contract, we have to go through the entire planning process, get to the endpoint, put out bids for construction, find out what the results are, put on a contingency, and then we can give you a fixed price contract. Well, we can't do that until the end of the development process. We can't do it at the outset of it. So if that's what you guys want in the county, then, then, then how are you thinking you could possibly reimburse us during the course of the development of all that? If nothing can happen until the agreement for fixed price is signed, which can only, we can only be confident giving you a number four at the end of the process. So that's the catch 22 that suddenly emerged. And what I was trying to suggest to the county executives, that one needs to be worked through. And what the developers are eager for is a sit-down meeting with the principals of the departments and the lawyers saying, look, let's, let's, and as partners, let's work this through. And as you've heard and corrected, the county's attorney's offices, nope, we've got to finish our work. We'll review everything. We're trying to decide whether they continue with a markup of the initial agreement that was proposed in March, or alternatively, just come back with an entirely new agreement, uh, and we'll tell you what it's going to be. And that is what is concerning to us. It's not a spirit of partnership, it's a spirit of, well, here's what the county does and that's all we can do. Uh, so we do see some real impediments here that are slowing up progress. We can hope that when the county finally comes down from Mount Olympus and says what they're willing to do, it will be something we can work with, but we don't know that. And, and, uh, and meanwhile, there is a, I think, uh, unfortunate tendency and to some degree, the county executive and evidenced this tonight. Hey, the lawyers are the ones in control. We, you know, we can't do anything about this. Well, I, I, I have a lot of us on the call when we're discussing this have a hard time with that approach. Our feeling is it's, principles are set out by the principals and then the lawyers should basically put that on paper, but they shouldn't be calling the shots for the deal. So anyway, we are currently stuck. I hope we can become unstuck over the next month. But it's very evident that, uh, in terms of the timeframe, from what we can say to our residents, that where even a few months ago, we were saying, we hope the site plan could be submitted sometime this fall, which would mean if you paste everything through, ground might be broken in early 2025. I, it's hard for me to see that we're not at least six months later than that.
At least.
Uh, and that's assuming we get some real traction quickly on the legal agreement. So it's, it's frustrating.
So how does the stalling of the parks plan affect the developers' plans to build the residential and retail building or buildings?
Uh, that's a very good question, Joy. And I've, I've had some sidebar conversations with the developers about that. They basically feel that, that this does not change their, uh, their attitude about, about the project itself, and they're not threatening some, something different. Uh, and they also, uh, a related issue is that right at this moment, it's very difficult to get, uh, large real estate loans from mid-tier banks that do a lot of the bank, the support, financial support for this kind of construction. But Bernstein is extremely well-capitalized company. They're able to put in more equity if they need to, which obviously if you reduce the leverage, it's easier to get the lending. Uh, and so Lisa's been represented to me that, that they don't see that that side of the equation is a constraint. They're focused on the constraint of getting the agreements in place, getting the planning done, getting the permits. That's what they see as the, the delaying element.
Well, I guess my, my major concern is that, um, I mean, you know, it was such a coup for the town to, to be able to work with the community and the developers to get these parks on the edge of our border. And so my concern is the longer this drags out, that the. And so my concern is the longer this drags out, that the developer builds just some. Huge building that just towers over our town, which, and then we don't get parks, which is not optimal.
One, one point which which Irene and I have talked about is. We would like to engage in, in, in an ongoing set of discussions with county council members. Sort of help strengthen the political support, starting with, with um, Andrew Friedson. But we would like to reach others. Now, of the 11, and I've lost count whether it was six who were in the old council or only five. But it's something in that bracket. Um. But we probably need to reach all the county council members and most especially the new ones. To explain the project to them. Uh, among other things, explain that. Out of the total cost of the entire project, both the parks, the garage and the refurbishment and expansion of the farm women's market. The county is putting in less than 25% of the money. The rest is coming from us, from the state and from PIP money, which essentially is local developer money. Uh, and even the Parks Department is only putting in PIP money. Payment, you know, we're not putting in its own budgetary money. So the question of, oh my gosh, why are we doing so much for a wealthy area really should not. Be on anyone's radar, given that low percentage of county financing of this amenity. Um, but anyway, I think those are discussions that is timely for us to have. Because we, we, we could welcome, be concerned that people would begin to question this and raise issues. And we want to make sure that we can try to lock in the support from the, the county council.
Thank you, Barney. So I, I hate to open up a can of worms, but I want to ask Todd and and you a question since you visited Met Park. Uh, yesterday. In light of what you learned, um. Or how do you feel about Zimmerman Park? Has anything changed with respect to? How you would approach Zimmerman Park? Or or maybe you haven't, I'm just wondering.
I haven't really thought all that through yet.
Okay, okay.
I've been, as I, Todd did ask me that question. I was thinking, well, you know. Until we find out where we are with the permits and everything for Zimmerman. Then we ought to bring it back on the table and see whether we want to take any things into account. But I haven't thought it through carefully myself yet.
All right. Okay. Todd, what do you, what do you think? Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
We'll continue on the course of getting all the reviews done with Zimmerman and we'll figure out where we are in a few months.
Okay, all right. That sounds to me like. No, no, that's fine. Something to consider for the, for the future. Okay. Um, wonderful. Thank you so much. Uh, so the next topic is gas powered leaf blower ban slash enforcement. So what um, I just want to clarify for the audience is that next Wednesday, um, the town council will have a work session specifically about enforcement. Um, there's been a memorandum prepared by town staff uh at the request of council to. Get some statistics as it relates to enforcement. Uh, we've received a lot of great information. Thank you from. Uh, the, the uh, climate and environment committee on how the other uh Somerset and and Chevy Chase Village, how they're. Handling the ban and enforcement. It's a little bit different um from us certainly, but um, from an enforcement standpoint. We thought it was necessary to have that as background information as you are then now thinking about. You know, what do we do with respect to a, a potential full year ban? Um, we heard earlier from the county executive and and I've also heard separately that. The county council is resurrecting the, the uh legislation for a full year uh ban. Uh, that I've offered to, to talk with whoever, because this is a, this is a very successful program for, for partial year. Uh, with respect to its rebate program, um, with respect to the compliance that we've been able to achieve. And just offering, if anyone wants any additional information, I have not yet been taken up on that, but that's okay. However. Uh, Councilmember Friedson does believe not only will it come to. The floor, if you will, in the next few weeks, but that he does expect a, that it will pass. So what that means though, in terms of what will pass. We're not sure yet. We're not sure what about that, eh, eh, how it will look. Let's put it that way. So. Um, I offer that as just background information as well. So I guess for today, just kind of a straw poll with respect to. The uh, the prospect of a full year ban. How do we all feel about it? Uh, and uh, you know, no decisions tonight as much as just a, a temperature check. So. Anyone who's very welcome to, to, why don't you go ahead?
I'm very much in favor of enacting a full year ban, um, starting in January of 2024. Um, so that would be the coming year. I think that um, we have uh. You know, we've done what we needed to do to enable people to ease into uh. Uh, into the season. Um, we may want to talk about uh some exceptions, but in general, I think um, is, you know, the comment that was made. Earlier by um, one of our residents online. I don't believe she's online again. Um. I think uh, you know, there are a lot of compelling reasons why we should just move forward with a full year ban. Um. And I think surrounding communities are doing it. People in the town have been hearing about it. We can certainly do a much better job of uh communication. And making sure that everyone has information regarding that in terms of signage and notification and all of that, but um. I'm very supportive of full year bans starting next year.
Thank you, Joy. Does anyone else?
Um, I'm also in favor of a, a full year ban um. With a couple of. Issues asterisks that I'd like to continue to explore. And one of them, you know, Joy mentioned me, you know, maybe with some exceptions. Um, I want to make sure that it makes sense for some of the really, really heavy jobs, like municipal jobs, our own contractors, for example. Um, I think we need to explore uh whether and and uh and how soon they feel like. They would be able to comply with it. If there's a county ban, they're going to have to. I mean, like, it's not really an issue of if, but when, I think. Um, uh. But I think, I think we, it, it does bear just a little bit more discussion about the uh, the, the. Just to make sure we're all buttoned down about the efficacy of the. Higher powered electric blowers that have come into existence since we originally did a nine month ban and just to. Just to make sure we're all in agreement. And I, I also um would very much encourage. The council to consider um reopening the um subsidy program for uh. Landscaping contractors who didn't take advantage of it the first time and are still using gas blowers. Um. We have the money. If no one takes advantage of it, no one takes advantage of it, no harm, no foul, but I think it's just equitable to. Help folks, uh, especially as the county ban goes into effect where we can.
Just a clarification for.
Assuming it goes into effect.
Yeah, on the, on the subsidy side, it just for landscaping companies or also for residents? Just a clarification, I wasn't.
Um, however, I mean, I, I'm new, so however it was done before, I would suggest just extend, extending.
Got it.
Extending the old program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
You know, I fully support the, the full year ban. Um. One of the things that I was originally concerned about was the. The town's contractor, when we do our fall cleanup of the street, streets and. Um, it sounded like um. From what I heard, we, we still need to think about that a little bit more as to whether. Yeah, we, we don't want to, we don't want to not be able to clean up the leaves in the streets in a timely fashion. So if uh. So we do need to think about that a little bit more. Um. The, the other, the issues of subsidies, um. I'm not, I am, I am not in favor of extending it to residents anymore. And I'm not in favor of subsidizing large landscape companies. Uh, for doing this, but for some of the. The, the lands, a lot of the town residents use. One man shops or two man shops. And uh, that expense of there, those, those high powered battery packs are, are. They're over, they're 1,200 to 2,2500 dollars. And that's a big expense for. Somebody that's probably making a minimum wage doing grass cutting and lawn care. So I would be, I'd be supportive of. A limited uh rebate program, so not rebate, limited support. But not for the big companies. They, they ought to be moving towards that anyhow. So that's. My comment.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, yeah, my thoughts are that. I'd like to see us go to a year round ban, but I'd still like to see it done more gradually, uh, give another year at least. Uh, so we wouldn't go into effect till. January of 2025, which essentially means October 15th of 2025. Um, and part of that is to pick up another way to get at the point that you were just making, uh, Rich, which is. If landscape companies know we're going to go to a year around two years in advance, then. If there are any time in that intervening time, they're going to have to replace their battery, their, their gas powered leaf blower. They have the opportunity to get a, a, a battery powered blower instead, then the. Cost is no longer the gross cost, but only the delta between. Buying the battery powered versus getting another gas powered. So I think. Giving people that forewarning is a good idea uh and helps make it more manageable. Um, I like the principle of additional rebate program and I'm fine with that. Um. The mechanics of how you work out your goal strikes me as very challenging. Uh, and I guess I would. End up supporting something that is more. Uh, liberal or far reaching, even if you think it ends up helping some people who didn't really need it. Rather than not having one at all. So without knowing the details. Yeah, without knowing the, and that, I, again, you're just asking for a straw poll. I, that needs a lot more work, but I, I would, I would support something else. And I would specifically want to get at supporting the large scale packs that are needed for the heavy fall jobs. I think we've done everything we need to do. For people to go out and get a $400 system or $300 system to get the, the lawn cuttings off their foot sidewalks. But I think the real issue is the heavy fall work, so let's focus something that really does that. So that would be my view, move toward it, but probably just a bit more gradually than perhaps some of my colleagues were suggesting.
Thank you.
And even also, it might all be overtaken by events, as those of us who are in the State Department used to say, because the county may make a decision and then we don't have to worry about it.
This is true. This is true.
I, I did want to add one thing. I, I read, there was an article in the Washington Post. About gas powered leaf blowers. And one of the comments that somebody made. A gas powered leaf blower operated for 30 minutes. Was equivalent to a semi truck. Going from here to like St. Louis in terms of its pollution. It's unbelievable amount of pollution spewing from those, from those machines. And and I, and I, and I do think about the workers too, you know, it's just. They're breathing that stuff. Yeah. So I just wanted to.
Thank you. So um, thank you for all your comments. The uh. I think this has been a very successful program in, in the town. I mean, it's been a noticeable. Difference during these 10 months, 15, 14 days a year, obviously in the winter when I get, but with climate change, you might be. Mowing your lawn in February, who knows? But um, I do, I, there is a marked difference in just uh. Uh, just a noise level, completely different. Um. And with that being said though, uh, I am, there are a couple of things that I'm a little. Concerned about going straight into a ban and one is. And this is my principle here that I, I'm, I'm not one that says do as I say and not as I do. Uh, I want to ensure that if it is something that the, that, that we're passing is a full, full year ban, that it is also obliged by our landscaper. And so it's a little unclear to me still what the, what the impact would be from a budgetary standpoint. Uh, whatever that delta is, that it's uh, if that would be acceptable to us as a council and ultimately the residents, right? Um, so whatever that amount is, that, that would be the difference, given that we want them to go quickly, we want them to be efficient. Um, and by the way, you can do nothing about that very, very loud vacuum that's underneath the truck. So there would still be noise, you know? So I have a lot of questions and concerns about just that do as I say, not as I, as I do. The secondary portion of all this is that um, as we have our landscaper go through the town very quickly. Uh, the individual landscaping companies are also told to do that, right, for, for just uh. Get through as many properties as they can in a given day uh to, to, to make, make their ends meet. And the machinery required to pick up heavy wet leaves in, in the fall. Um, is something that's still expensive, you know, per, per the, per the information that's been provided to us. So my secondary concern around that is that would the increase in costs be passed down to individual. Residents as a part of their contract and how would residents feel about that? Maybe they are. Fine with, with whatever incremental costs would be associated, because it, it would be passed down to customers. We can't just. No matter what the amount of subsidies we're talking about, ultimately there would be an increase. Um, so I think about that as well. And I'm not trying to only. Say it's just the economics of, of all of this, but this is stuff that does come up and we, we need to be mindful of that. I think a lot more education is needed. Um, the, the last time that there was a, you know, flyer passed around. Uh, a lawn sign put up, uh, you know, distributed around town, uh, you know. It's been a while and a lot of new people have moved into the town uh in, in just since we, we've had that rebate program. Um, so. I think that there is other things that, that can be done to, to uh. Uh, win over hearts and minds. Maybe that's the best way that I, I can put it. Uh, I'd also would maybe suggest, you know, the, the gradual method is. I'd like to kind of see, um. What happens this fall? Uh, when we're talking about, you know, it's upon us, no ban is in place for, for 2023. Why not collect information with respect to how many people are going to complain about the noise? How many people are going to say, wait, I thought there was a ban in place. Why aren't you doing anything about that? There's a lot of education that can even occur just with that kind of uh interaction with, with other residents. So um, those are my thoughts. I appreciate the straw poll. Uh. And next week, as I mentioned in our work session, we'll talk about enforcement. So, good, thank you. Do you have any comments specifically to the ban portion of it? Because again, no decisions have been made right now. We were just discussing it amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I, I, I would, again, I think we just need to collect some information. Last time we talked about it. Um, even with the electric blowers. That our landscaper, Todd, you need to clarify it for me. I think our landscaper still, still was concerned about. Their ability to efficiently clean. Quickly some of the streets, uh.
That's right. The volume and the weight of the leaves can become very great. And you know, of course, as Irene mentioned, the vacuum is. Likely louder than the gas powered leaf blowers they're using to collect the leaves, but um. We have a very tight schedule we need to maintain and, and, and you know, before we had a really good contract in place for leaf collection. And we were brow beaten by residents for not collecting leaves as quickly as possible. It, it. Roundly criticized for several years before we got a good contract in place and, and honed it and fine tuned it to the way we wanted it. And then there's a pretty tight schedule and there's a ton of leaves and a ton of trees in the town. And um. They just don't feel like they can keep to that schedule by just simply using electric or battery powered blowers. Uh, unless of course, and I'm going, going to provide figures to the council next week. Uh, what their estimates would be for the cost associated with only using. Battery or, or in this case, it would be battery powered blowers. You know, if they double or triple up on the crews and trucks, they might be able to keep up with it. But you're talking about extra pollutants being put into the air by those trucks.
And, and the big power, the big blower, the vacuum that they use, that's, that's a, that's an industrial-sized engine on that, on that, on that thing. So, yeah, I just, we just need to get some more information about how we, how we could accommodate a full leaf ban and, you know, not impact the ability of us to get our leaves off of our streets. I, I would maintain there, it, it's dangerous. It's just flat dangerous to have wet leaves on streets. And, you know, people sliding through stop signs and stuff, and we need to do it. You know, you do need to do it quickly, so.
Right, it all depends upon if you want to throw significant money, significant people power, and significant equipment towards the effort. I mean, you can.
Well, that gets to Irene's point. We need to, we need to get some.
Talk it through and get more information. I'm sure that there are areas around here, parts of the country, that have had to deal with similar municipal-level challenges here.
Well, Hughes has done that. Because initially, when we did have the, you know, discussion about this, and they were encouraged to do so, and they started out with two battery-powered leaf blowers, as they have now two gas-powered leaf blowers. I'm sorry, they do not have enough. Prior to that, it was two gas-powered leaf blowers. Encouraged to do two battery-powered leaf blowers. First of all, the batteries drained very, very quickly, multiple batteries. And second, they just couldn't keep up with it. So then it switched to one gas and one, one battery power. It's just, is not moving quickly enough. These are heavy, heavy wet leaves and an enormous amount of leaves. So we're just trying to balance things out, yes.
Do we know how Somerset and Chevy Chase Village pick up their leaves?
Chevy Chase Village has their own public works department, and so they have a whole crew who goes out there and rakes them up and puts them in a truck.
What about, what about Somerset?
Somerset, I'm not sure, Marty.
We could find out how Somerset picks up their leaves.
Yes, Somerset, because I, I just want to gently remind that they pay 16 cents on every $100 of assessed value of property, where we paid less than a penny. So make sure everybody, because there's complaints always about the taxes here, okay?
That's a very good data point. The last point I wanted to make, because I do like the idea this fall of just seeing to what extent have a lot of landscape crews perhaps already shifted over to batteries and just see how big the problem is at the end of the fall. That's very helpful for you to have said that.
Yeah, more data, we need more data.
We just, as you say, communication is the essence.
One of the things that the committee gave us were the, the little handouts that the, that, you know, that the town. So they give them to, and, and we, I think we have something similar. But again, I would like, I would like us to be proactive and maybe get the, the committee, the environment committee and us, have them in hand so we can, as we see people that need to have education about our leaf ban, we can hand these out.
Well, whenever.
I would be more than happy to do that.
Whenever a, it's usually a resident-initiated call to, to the town and things like that, the, the information that is handed out presently, if there is a violation of sorts, if you will, and I won't call it, but somebody isn't, you know, using a good battery power or electric blower, they are provided with that information today. But you're saying on top.
Yeah, I mean, proactive, I mean, I, all of us, all of us walk around.
All thousand homes should get another reminder.
And as we walk around, and as the committee, members of the committee walk around. Yeah, as, as we see it, I mean, it's, it's not going to be objectionable. People just hand them something and say, you know, here's some information.
That's right.
About using gas-powered leaf blowers in the town. We don't need to get, go ahead, Todd.
You know, it was, it was, it was helpful that the Climate and Environment Committee sent around those, those leaflets and flyers, and we, and we have the same thing. We hand them out, and Dave and our code enforcement officer hand them out, even, even those who they don't see using gas-powered leaf blowers, but they see gas-powered leaf blowers on their trucks. So we're in fact being very proactive in that respect. We have flyers. We did a communications campaign. We sent targeted publicity to, to, to contractors and residents, and we hand out flyers actively to those who both are using and aren't using gas-powered leaf blowers, just to make people aware of, of the ban in the town. So I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that we're not actively publicizing and promoting our ban to potential violators, because we are.
And I didn't, I didn't mean, you weren't. But I, I, I just, I just showed, I just showed Barney a picture I took tonight as I was walking. There was a landscaping contractor there, sitting there in the back of his, and it was one of the bigger ones. And two gas-powered leaf blowers. And I said something to him, of course, he didn't understand because of communication barrier. And I would have, I would have loved to have had that little flyer just to hand to him and say, hey, you know, this is, this is information you need to give to your boss and, and let him do it. So I, it's not, not impugning you guys and your work. I know you're doing everything you can, but we can do more.
I agree with, oh, I mean, there was a comment, you know, about enforcement, it shouldn't be on the residents. Well, we rely on residents to help us enforce our laws. They're the eyes and ears of the town 24/7. Staff is in the office 9 to 5. We, we appreciate and, and would encourage, you know, and the help of our residents and, and the committee and the council to, to help us get the word out and publicize it further, because the staff doesn't live in the town, and, and we're only there a short period of time. Yeah, no, I didn't take that as a, as a, as a, as a complaint on the staff. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that we are being proactive as much as we can with the resources we have. And, and, and I do believe enforcement is a function of town residents and others to, to help us, because we're a very small staff and we're only there for eight hours a day.
I'll be, I'll be over on Friday morning to pick up some leaflet.
All right, I'll have a pile for you.
Great, one final thing, as you mentioned about Stuart possibly being a part. It's going to be online over Zoom. It won't be in this room, so that might help in, in having more people participate or participate. It'll be a work session, so accordingly, okay? Great, last discussion item is the Town Chevy Chase Real Estate Disclosure Form. So a quick background on this for those online. When a property is purchased in town and they leave, you already bought, you already purchased stuff, you're good. The, currently, when you go in and to closing and you, you sign the three inches of paperwork, one of those items has nothing to do, or none of those items, I should say, have nothing to do with the fact that you live in the town of Chevy Chase, an independent municipality. We feel that because there is a lag in time between the time somebody moves in and then they get their lovely welcome bag from the climate, the Community Relations Committee, in between, they might want to remodel their home, they might want to do some driveway repair, they might want to do all sorts of things, and may not realize that they live in an independent municipality that's represented by a town council, that there are programs in place to help them plant canopy trees. There are building requirements, there are water drainage requirements that they must abide by. So this Real Estate Disclosure Form essentially would be inserted into that three-inch pack. And what Todd has done, thank you so much, has reached out to the GCAR, the Greater, it's, it's the Local Real Estate Association. And they have, it's all set up where, and I see Wicca on the line, where you would get all of, there's like the required forms, and you would basically pull one for the town of Chevy Chase. We have, if there's obviously a property purchased here. Tacoma Park has its own disclosure form, and apparently Garrett Park is undergoing the same process just simultaneously to what we're, we're doing now.
And then Tacoma Park says that you cannot have a nuclear power plant in your front yard. Is that part of their?
You may not install nuclear power at your house.
Do whatever you need to, whatever you need to say. So they talk about their rent, their rent control legislation, things like that in there. So in using it as a template, Todd reached out to the Forms Committee of GCAR and asked, you know, would, you know, what's the process? Would they be willing? They're effectively waiting on us to put forth a, a form that the, that the Forms Committee of GCAR would, would review and approve or come back with comments or whatever. So the attempt here for today is, this is in draft, this has been prepared by Ron. And the attempt here, or the discussion point today is, tell us what you think. Is this appropriate? Is there writing that you would delete or add? Are there sections of our code that you think are important to put in or take out? That is the, thank you so much, Lou, that is the. So that's, that's what we're talking about today, so.
I just want to, I brought this up at the Land Use Committee meeting, and we have three realtors, one of which is also a lawyer. They thought it was a superb idea, just a superb idea to do it.
Excellent, thank you.
I think it's an excellent idea. I'm pretty agnostic as to how the form actually looks, because honestly, the advantage is simply going to be that whoever, you know, the closing agent is, is going to say, and here is the town of Chevy Chase thing.
That's right.
Whether they read it or not is. Let's be honest with ourselves, but at least it would be brought to their attention, and they'll know that we exist, and they've got to.
It's not Dave coming over and issuing a stop order or a stern look that, you know, as the welcome, "Welcome to the town of Chevy Chase."
Here are your handcuffs. I have a couple of, first, I think it's a great idea, completely. And I think almost all the wording is just fine. I just have a few very specific points. One is somehow in the, maybe you have to break the first paragraph, but there should be a sub-headline for building ordinances, just the way you have one for water drainage and for urban forests. So that's called out, we have building ordinances. Secondly, I would suggest the deletion of the words "character of the town." That is problematic, it's code, we know how people read that. Everything else there is fine. You're preserving the green spaces, light and air between buildings, and the uniformity, building setbacks, that says everything you need to say. But just, we don't need the words "character of the town." And then, and then the last comment was under the noise control, and obviously, this could change, but rather than just saying landscaping equipment during certain times, I would say certain seasons and times. I mean, I think we want to alert the fact that we've got a nine-month ban. It's not just a matter of time of day usage. Those are my three comments, but I think it's great to do this.
Thank you for that. Joy, do you have any comments at all? Well, that was one of the.
You want to keep it up to date, you have to do that.
Well, that's, that's one of the overall questions, right? So when, to be frank, when I first saw this, I thought, oh, I, I thought we would just kind of have a sentence with a reference to the pace on the town of Chevy Chase website. So, you know, that kind of, is it too much information that would need to be updated? Is it, you know, is it?
I think it's got to be enough that people realize we take it seriously, right? And it's just a reference without any.
I agree, and I think there's very little, if anything, in here that would require, you know, it's general categories. It's not a lot of specificity, so I don't think it's going to need a lot of updates.
Okay, good.
And if it fell a little bit out of date, so what?
Well, we could update it, they seem to be a pretty.
And by the way, you updated electronically, right? And then it gets printed out as part of the package.
Yeah, yeah, we would, it would be our responsibility to, yeah, exactly. I don't know, Todd, does this need any sort of, obviously, there's some updates, but it doesn't need any sort of public vote of any sort, correct? Okay.
That's correct. The only other issue that the council needs to consider is whether they want to codify this requirement as part of the town code. Tacoma Park does so, Garrett Park is, is, is planning to do so. And whether the council wants to codify this requirement as part of our town code is something that you should consider, and that would obviously require a public hearing.
Public hearing. Town side of it necessarily, yeah. Okay, I think we're going to go forward and codify it in whatever timing.
But meantime, you can finalize this and get it up to the.
Yeah, I, we'll, we'll get Ron to finalize it, do one more round to make sure everyone feels good.
Do that electronically.
And electronically.
I'm perfectly willing to let Barney beat the other.
No good deed goes unpunished, is that what you're telling me?
Congratulations.
I'm not a lawyer.
All right, sorry, I felt like you wanted to say one more thing, Todd, about this.
No, it was taken care of, I think, yes, I, I got it.
Okay, wonderful, great, we are doing so well on time, I'm so happy. The last, but very important topic is Maryland Municipal League. When, when the new council was constituted, Joy and I spoke in May or so, April, May, sorry, May, June. And, you know, there's, there's new leadership at the Maryland Municipal League, and folks, other municipalities are more involved than we are, are quite excited. So I thought of it as an opportunity to, to become more engaged. So I, we, we set it up so that Joy could be on the legislative committee so that we have an opportunity to understand what the other municipalities are advocating for in Annapolis during that marathon, you know, session that occurs in early part of the year. So we thought we'd give you some time to talk about the priorities and everything else.
Can we first thank you for having taken this on, Joy?
Yes, yes.
I really appreciate it.
Another labor of love.
And your summarization of what they, what they considered was good, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So the Maryland Municipal League is the Association of Municipalities in Maryland. There is a like organization called the Maryland Association of Counties for county governments. There's all kinds of associations around, around the state. But in any case, and, and the Maryland Municipal League, or MML, also has a number of committees. The one that, you know, Irene and I thought was most interesting for us, of course, would be the Legislative Committee, so that we could see what MML is, is advocating for in Annapolis. And it's been, really just been fascinating. There are about 28 members on this committee. They're representing municipalities as small as ours, and obviously, you know, the big ones like Rockville and Gaithersburg, and, you know, some of the little charming towns that, you know, we may have passed through, like Chester Town and Hakers Town, and, you know, towns from all over the state, municipalities from all over the state. And they all have, of course, issues that, you know, are very different. Rural municipalities are going to have different sets of challenges than we have in largely an urban area. There were, what happens, like this is a, you know, I'm getting to see the sausage, you know, how a bill becomes a law at the state level is, again, for a government nerd like me, is fascinating. But I won't bore you with all the, you know, the gory details. But just to let you know that, you know, there are priorities that different people or different towns bring forward. And they say, okay, this is a problem for us, and we, we really want the whole MML to come behind us and like push for, or advocate for some law to be passed in Annapolis. And many of these have to do with revenue issues. And so the priorities that I described for you all regard municipalities' ability to generate revenue. So one of which is the creation of these tourism-specific zones. And so you could imagine like a place like Ocean City, that's very important for municipalities like that. Again, it creates certain zones that enables businesses to be set up, and it helps the municipality generate revenue. Another is, the other priority this year is focusing on the double taxation issue. There's a more technical term, which I will not share. But we don't have that issue here in, we are within Montgomery County, and we have already worked out a way where, you know, we don't pay double tax to the county and to the town. we don't pay double tax to the county and to the town. But that is not the case. You would think it would be, but it's not the case. So there are, uh, there are other municipalities where people, if they decide to move to whatever town, they're essentially paying double tax because their town is paying for trash removal, but they're already taxed in their county for trash removal. So that's, you know, a sticky wicket that they need to work out. The, the priority, so that's the second priority for the year. The third priority, which happens to be number one on the list, um, and which is something that we have talked about before in the past and prior councils have also talked about this is, um, regards speed cameras. So we know that our neighbors south of us to Connecticut Avenue that have their own police force. They also are allowed to have speed cameras because of the state law stipulates that in order to issue a citation to someone who commits an infraction that's caught on a speed camera, the citation must be signed by a sworn law enforcement officer. And so the, um, MML this year is going to push for legislation. This is not going to happen immediately. This is like a multi-year effort. To allow municipalities to assign non sworn officers to sign such citations. You know, I know we've talked before about traffic issues in our town. I live on one of the busiest streets in the town. I'm very concerned about that just as a resident. And I don't know if having speed cameras in the town would ever be a good thing. But, um, it looks like with respect to MML, it might become a possibility for us because we're never going to have our own sworn officers.
Well, my, I, I, I think I sent you the question. I, it's not just that for, for Maryland. There's, there is also a prohibition, a legislative prohibition at the state level on the number of speed cameras in the state total. And they were allocated around. So the, even if, even if we wanted to get a speed camera, we couldn't because with the allocation is.
Really?
Yeah. So that wouldn't help. It would help those communities that already have speed cameras and are, would, would, it would allow them to have a public official sign for the citation. But for us, I don't think we're doing any good.
Where, where'd you read this? Is this a new law?
There's no, when we were doing the traffic stuff, when I was the chair of the PSC, it came up. And there's a, and Todd, I, I think, I think I was, I'd have to go back and research it, but I remembered there was there was also a limitation on just the number of speed cameras that were allowed in the state.
Why?
How can they do that?
They legislated.
On what basis? First come, first served? How do they?
I don't know how they did. Todd, you probably know more about it than.
No, I don't. I know that, I know that Montgomery County had indicated they, they run the, the, the speed camera. They do the, um, speed camera to deployment for the state, um, with state approval, S H A approval. And at one point they told me that they were, you know, limited in the number of cameras they could deploy. I think it was primarily politically motivated, but, um, several years later, they said we have funds that we can deploy based, you know, the sort of in a, not an unlimited capacity, but I, I'm not aware of a state law that limits the number of deploying, then the number of cameras that can be deployed. I'm not aware of that. I can certainly ask Ron to investigate it, though.
Yeah, I, 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 there was some, there was some hitch because we, when we, when we said, well, why don't we deploy some cameras? It was the county said, we, we can't deploy anymore. They didn't give us the authority. So some, there's other authorities that have to approve the installation of speed cameras in, in the state of Maryland.
And yes, it has to agree to, to, to the Montgomery County Police Department has an automated traffic enforcement unit that, that addresses speed camera deployments on state highways. The state, that's, the S H A has to approve the deployments. I'm not aware of a limitation on the number, but I'll certainly ask Ron to look into it. I'm just not aware.
Or there, or if it's not on a state highway, or if it's not on a state road, if it's in a municipality.
I don't know. They answered that question.
The ones in, the ones in that, what's south of us? Chase Village, thank you. They're on a, they are on a state road. Right on Connecticut. Yeah. And I don't think they've got any within their town. I think they're just on Connecticut. So I, I, we just need to.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I would suggest that, you know, obviously speed cameras aren't, 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 aren't appropriate and, 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 uh, you know, inside a municipality. And I don't think that they would be very well received, um, if they were i- inside, on town streets. But that's a political issue that, um, would need to be addressed.
I have, I have a question for Joy on, just in terms of, I, I think your point is this would still be useful just to give us the flexibility to make a decision down the road if we wanted to look into it. And that's, I think it's clearly seen in just that light. What I'm curious about is whether granted that a police officer would not have to issue a citation, is there any consideration as to who could issue a citation? One of the issues that came up, we looked at this before, was that it would have to be the county that would then do it. So then, you know, then you'd have to find county officials in D O T who would be willing to review the footage from cameras that might be in the town of Chevy Chase and then be issued. And that has a problem. So the question is sort of how, whether this legislation as it's shaped, how broadly will they open the doors to officials, including, you know, uh, non-uniformed officials in the municipality who might be given the right to review the footage and issue citations. So we just sort of know how general they're talking about that.
Yeah, that's interesting. The municipalities who are really advocating for this have police forces and what they, what they really want is the ability to get the policemen off of camera duty.
Right.
And get them out on the street.
So presumably would be municipal officials.
But other municipal officials would be able to sign those citations.
And I think the wording of you, it was other other municipal.
Other municipal officials. So in that case, so it's municipal officials, so not their county.
Not necessarily county officials.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Thank you.
So that's, that's all I have. Um, there will be, um, you know, a number of upcoming meetings, these meetings, some of them, a couple of them will be in Annapolis. I've already been to Annapolis once.
There's a college park, uh.
The annual conference.
Conference that we're splitting duties on.
Do you need authority to, to go along with what their recommendations are?
Well, so this is really interesting. The, um, the, the members of the committee vote on what the priorities should be. Then they present it to the MML leadership and then the MML leadership decides, okay, yes, we will advocate for these issues or no, we won't. And then you know, with these particular priorities, it could take shape in any number of ways. So with the, the speed camera issue, there's going to have to be a law. And so, you know, they will be advocating for whatever. They're going to have to find, you know, legislators who might be in favor of this or figure out who's not in favor. So the same way, you know, it works on the Hill.
But I think you were at, you're, you were asking whether you are somehow an official delegate to MML right, that requires.
Yeah, I mean.
Our imprimatur to.
One of those.
Right.
Three things.
Right. That's a really. That's a, that's a really interesting question.
Are you the like the electoral college where you can do whatever you want?
What I, what my, my impression is that if there were something, if there were some law that we really wanted to press in Annapolis, then obviously that would require input from the rest of the council because, right, because, um, so the speed camera thing, it was, I'm not going to reveal the municipality that put it forward, but they had, you know, an entire write up many pages with, you know, justifications and, you know, studies and all sorts of things. And their whole government was behind it. And it just so happened that there were a number of other municipalities that were, that had the same issue. So I think, you know, in this case, the, I think you have to recognize municipalities are always going to have, you know, we're coming at issues from different positions. And so, you know, I don't know if I should say this on camera. We don't really have a revenue problem, but other places do. So of course, you know, we're not going to share a lot of those concerns. But I, I wouldn't vote against, you know, I'm not going to vote against the people, the municipalities that want to have tourism zones because if that's what they need to generate revenue.
Right.
Exactly.
When we get multifamily units in here and the people rent them out for vacationers, then maybe we may want to tax those people.
What I'm interested to understand is when, when were these three, like, what, what timing was the the submittal of these three issues? So, so when is our next, when is our next opportunity to possibly submit an idea for legislative change? So, you know, the one that comes top of mind for me in, in terms of state legislative change is the clarification for multifamily housing. Um, so when would there be that kind of like, we can put in uh, those, those requests?
Yeah, so those are called, they, it is Legislative Action Requests, L A Rs. And our next opportunity to do so would be the next fiscal year. So what they do is they collect these legislative action requests from municipalities and then they're pooled together. And then at the beginning of the fiscal year, so July, that's when we had our first meeting. You, you go through a list and I think there were like twenty eight of them that had been submitted. And then, you know, the group narrowed them down to these three. Some of them were kind of folded in together.
So like next January, February?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever we, right, start thinking. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for your extra time on that, too. Is there anything else anybody has for this today? Okay. Thank you. I declare this adjourned.